Good evening, everybody. This is the Curriculum Workshop for the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, February 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM at O'Neill Middle School. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on District 58's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchek.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. This evening, members of the audience will have a special two-way extended public comment opportunity with the board later on in the agenda. The board has anyone wishing to comment to fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed at the basket on that table by the front entrance over there to my right. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment, up to three minutes each. We're going to start off today, as we always do, with a flag salute, so stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Today is the Curriculum Workshop, so we're going to welcome Justin Sissel to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We do have a number of topics to cover this night, so I'm going to go ahead and jump right in with a quick overview of what we'll be talking about. Our first presentation we're going to hear is from John Gada, who is the CEO of the Ecker Group, giving us an update on key performance indicators, taking into account the portrait of a graduate work that we've done, and really giving us an opportunity to look at some next steps as a district in that direction. After that, we'll have an update on the Dual Language Committee and some programming updates looking toward next year. We'll spend some time talking about some slight adjustments to the middle school schedule for next year that will allow us some additional opportunities for students. We'll hear from the Math Committee on the work that's been happening, particularly around acceleration and as it relates to some of those middle school classes. We'll have a brief update on professional learning, and then we will get to the reception of visitors, as mentioned. So quite a number of things for us to go through this evening. As I mentioned, we're going to begin with a presentation by Mr. John Gada. As we're aware, we've entered into a relationship with the Ecker Consulting Group as of December, and this is really the first opportunity to see some of the fruits of that work. We're really excited about what's going to be shared. John's going to give us a lot of background at a high level in terms of how we approach this work, and then get into some specific things toward the end of the presentation relative to our measurements and potential key performance indicators. You'll hear John talk about the school improvement process and what all of that looks like, which aligns well with the conversations we've had over the past year and a half with our revisions and improvements to those processes around the cycles of inquiry. You'll hear John talk about academic achievement and growth data, which is the kind of data that we are most used to operating with, although he's going to contextualize it and frame it a little bit differently for us, which is going to help, I think, in a big way with the direction we are looking to go. At the end of the presentation, and I'll say this again at the end, what we're really looking for from the board tonight is two things. One, do we have sort of a conceptual level understanding and agreement with the way we're beginning to approach this work? And then, two, with the two specific indicators that are a little bit built out, how comfortable are we or what would it take for us to become comfortable with moving forward with specifically those two? So I will now turn things over to John Gada.
Okay, great. Thanks, Justin. Thanks, member of the board. It's a pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about the work that Ecker has begun with the district, specifically in terms of how do we engage in evidence-based practice and evidence-based governance, and how do we think through how to measure some of the big initiatives that are going on within the district? And so, a little bit about myself, I'm CEO of Ecker Group, and Ecker Group is a national organization that works with school districts to help them implement evidence-based practice. And in a nutshell, we're a measurement firm that helps and supports school districts as they chart a course for the future to align their measurement systems so that they can truly go from board goals all the way down to individual students, to ensure that the priorities of the district are cascading down throughout the entire process. And so, before I get started, just a little advanced organizer, I'm only going to take about 10 or 15 minutes in terms of comments and remarks, because I feel like the question and dialogue back and forth is, I think, where the real opportunity to make sure there's an understanding of what this process represents. But before I go immediately into the slides, I titled this presentation Evidence-Based Governance. And the reason I did that is when we think about education, we talk about research-based practices all the time, right? I mean, how many times have we talked about that? Are we research-based? Is our programming research-based? And that's important, but being, you know, research-based is, it's important, but it's a much lower bar than being evidence-based. Because when you think about what it means to be research-based, it just means you're sort of basing your approaches and basing your ideas on ideas that have been thought about in the past, that may have existed in the literature, may have worked in other places, but that doesn't guarantee or provide evidence that it's actually working within your school district. And so, to be evidence-based is really to make sure that your measurement systems and your data systems are in place so that you can go from board goals all the way down to individual students, and you can be confident that the path that you're charting and the initiatives that you're rolling out are actually making a difference for students. And that's the idea behind this process. And so, what does that look like? Well, it looks like, starting at the highest level, right, you have your strategic-level KPIs or key performance indicators. We sometimes call them strategic indicators. If I call them strategic indicators, that's synonymous with key performance indicators. That drives your school improvement goals, which ultimately drives student success. What I want everyone to kind of digest from this slide is while the strategic planning process sets the broad direction for the school district, and the strategic goals set the direction and priorities, you know, the real work happens through the school improvement process, right? That's where the real work happens in terms of what we're implementing and aligning all of the priorities of the district to ensure that all students are getting access to the highest quality programming. And so, with that, at the strategic level, you've gone through a process, and you're still going through a process, that started with a strategic plan and a vision, sort of that big, bold vision for the future of what it is that you're trying to create. And that led into discussions around the portrait of a graduate, which took that vision, made it a little bit more tangible in terms of the outcomes that you're looking to develop in students, fell short of actual tangible metrics that you could use to monitor progress. And so, the work of strategic indicators or key performance indicators is how do we take the work of the portrait of a graduate that was driven by the vision of the strategic plan, but develop metrics and benchmarks that can be used to govern the district and ultimately to align the school improvement process? And so, if you think about the district's vision, portrait of a graduate, we're going to have a set of key performance indicators that the Board of Education can use to govern the district and the administration can use to lead the district, but ultimately, you have to align that to the school improvement processes. And so, if this is done according to best practice, right, the school improvement process needs to be focused on a set of strategic indicators that have been adopted by the Board and leadership. And so, it's those KPIs that needs to drive the school improvement process. And so, when you're doing the work of implementing the strategic plan, you're measuring its impact through the key performance indicators. But annual school improvement goals are different than long-term strategic benchmarks or targets that you're striving for. And so, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Ultimately, though, it has to result in student success. And so, this is, again, that alignment piece of starting with the key performance indicators at the board level as part of the strategic planning process, that influencing the work of the school improvement goals, and ultimately, the goal setting on these indicators, but making sure that each and every student is benefiting and making sure that no student goes unnoticed, that you're actually monitoring all these indicators at the student level. So when you think about this, these indicators will be aggregated up for the board, it'll be aggregated down to the building level, classroom level, all the way down to the individual student level. That's what it means to be aligned, going from board goals all the way down to individual students, that you're looking at the same exact set of metrics, the same exact data elements, but you're just scaling that up or down depending on the decisions that you're trying to make. And so, what do these things look like? What do strategic indicators look like? So before I present some draft ideas for District 58, it's helpful, I think, to think about other industries and what other industries have done as it relates to key performance indicators. So this is, you know, these are nothing special, but just a few to help us get our, kind of our brains around this idea. So you think about airlines, right? I mean, basic mission in an airline, right? You got to get people from point A to point B, you got to do that, you know, safely, you got to do that on time, right? Well, a key indicator or a strategic indicator for an airline is percent of on-time arrivals, right? It's fundamentally tied to the mission of the organization, and it's fundamental to its ability to move towards its vision, right? And it's a metric that any executive within an airline is going to know. You're not going to walk through the halls of an executive suite of American Airlines, United Airlines, they're going to know that number, right? It's just embedded in who they are. And so, one of the takeaways of this kind of an approach is, once you adopted a set of metrics, everybody's got to know, everyone's got to know their numbers, right? Because that's how you, that's how you work towards evidence-based practice, right? Is what you've decided is important, once you start measuring what matters, is you have to commit to that, and you have to drive that, and it's got to be part of all the conversations. Just like in an airline, it's part of all the conversations of what's our percent of on-time arrivals, and then they disaggregate it and look at it all different kinds of ways, but it's fundamental to the organization sort of meeting its objectives. Healthcare, readmission rate is a common metric that's used in the healthcare industry. Again, this is, this is the metric of, you know, patient goes in the hospital, they get discharged, right? We want to track whether they come back, right? Because that's an indicator of quality that's tied to reimbursements, but it's fundamental to a healthcare system to know that number, right? And so, that's an example of a strategic indicator. Hospitality revenue per available room, just another example. So the reason that I bring these up as examples is it should start to, you know, jog your, you're thinking a little bit about, like, what would we measure? Given what we're trying to create here within the school district, given our strategic plan, given our priorities, what are some indicators? How can we operationalize our vision into a set of observable metrics that we can use to govern progress towards that vision? That's what we're trying to do. And then have that cascade all the way down through the school improvement process, through all of the other initiatives, the instructional processes, all the way down to individual kids. So tonight, the district has three main goal areas focusing on learning, connecting the community, securing the future. We're only talking about the first one tonight. You know, as you think about moving, you know, forward, it would be a process that you may or may not go through for the other areas, but this is the piece that we're talking, the learning piece is what we're talking about tonight. And so, the last thing before I present some draft indicators to consider is it's not just enough to go as far as reporting on individual metrics, right? You also have to establish some meaningful benchmark. And a benchmark usually comes in three forms. It's usually some desired target, right, or just some value that you absolutely want to hit for aspirational reasons. I would say the most common is a normative reference, right? Some context to the information, so you know whether that number is favorable or not favorable. But sometimes you choose metrics where there are no comparisons, there are no external ways to compare, because it's a very internal metric, and so an option there is just create a baseline, sort of like where were we at one point in time? And then, as we work to improve the district, we can, we can measure ourselves against ourselves of where we were at any one, at any one point in time. And so, this is really important, especially the second, the normative reference is, and I can tell you, I do this for a living, you know, I'm a PhD statistician, and numbers is my world, but if you give me a number, whether it's an education-related number, a healthcare number, right, a number across a variety of contexts, I have a very hard time interpreting that number, right, or deciding whether it's a good number or a bad number, unless I have some reference, right? Some way to compare it, some context in terms of what the meaning of that number is. And so, that's why it's important, as you have these conversations, to think about not only what the metric is, but how do we think through what we should establish that benchmark to be? And so, these are three ways that you can have that, to have that conversation. So with that, the key piece of this, though, is it has to become the way you do business, because you could go through the motions, and you could establish metrics, and you could establish benchmarks, but if it doesn't make its way into the fabric of the organization, if it doesn't become part of the conversation day in and day out, if it doesn't become the way you do business, it's not going to have much of an impact. And so, through the relationship with Ecker, there are tools that are available to you to systematize this across the district. One of those is a strategic dashboard, so that at the board level and the ability to share even at a community level is there to organize these metrics and report out on these metrics once you've established them. And then, the school improvement piece, like I talked about, is how do you then cascade these metrics down, but then have the administrative teams, teachers, other personnel that are in instructional roles have access to this information so that they can judge progress within their own domains of responsibility, but also have visibility down to the individual student level? So, the dashboard is a way that you could organize things at the strategic level, at the governance level, and that the school improvement piece is where you can start linking it into goal-setting, your MTSS or RTI processes, get it, you know, concept of sort of return on investment, as you make those decisions, as you decide to stand up certain programs or interventions, you know, how are you going to know what's working and not working so you can continue to funnel energy, you know, towards that, those initiatives that are proven to work, right, that provide evidence that students are benefiting. So where do we go from here? So there's two indicators, as Justin mentioned, that are more academic in nature in terms of academic proficiency and academic growth, and then there's other indicators that are in this draft set, right, that are a little bit more abstract that we're going to measure or we're going to propose that you measure in a little different way. So one, academic proficiency, right? And you're going to see a little bit more in a couple of slides, but what this is on your screen is just a way to think about how you establish benchmarks. So this is your data, but this is not exhaustive. I just picked just one sheet of data, just so that you have an understanding of, it's, all of you are familiar, right, with the metric on the state report card, the percentage of students that meet or exceed state standards? That's a metric that we all talk about, right? What you might not be as familiar at is what that actually means, because it's easy to report that metric and come up with the interpretation that that's not so good, right? Because districts all across the state, right, they may report on maybe 40% of students meeting state standards, 50% of students meeting state standards, maybe 60% of state standards. And it's really easy to say, well, wow, half of our students aren't meeting state standards, that's not so good. But you have to understand what that bar is. That bar is just a policy bar set at the state level, right? That doesn't reflect being at grade level in any capacity, right? It's just a bar that is, that is set. If you look at where those percentages rank across the district, I mean, if you're at the, if you're at the 50th percent, if you have 50% of your students meeting state standards, right, you're almost at the 80th percentile. So just think about that in context, what that actually means, right? So if you just look at that raw metric, you're going to come up with a very different conclusion than if you sort of put alongside, now, that's an important metric, but if you put alongside it some context in terms of what that means, in terms of your competitiveness across the state. And so, this is one kind of report that you can use as you have the conversation of what's an appropriate benchmark or target to set for the district, because, you know, setting it at 100% meets or exceeds state standards or setting it at some number without the context may, you know, may not be the best, the best route forward. And the other piece is related to student growth, right? So one of the two main things we're going to talk about tonight is academic proficiency, right, and academic growth. When you think about goal-setting as part of the school improvement process, right, you certainly don't want to just set a target or a goal that's the same for every single school, because every school has their own set of circumstances, they have their own differences in student body, right? They have their own histories, their own storylines, right? And if you were to look at the previous slide, they're at different points in that process of, you know, working towards more and more students hitting that state-level proficiency bar. But one of the things that you can do is you can shift your thinking around academic growth to be more personal and to be personalized, and to actually look one student at a time, look at the academic trajectory of each and every student, how they've been progressing over multiple points in time, and extend that out to the growth trajectory that they're likely to continue on if, in fact, the district continues to have the same impact, and each school has the same impact. If you do that, then you can generate these projections or goals for every school that becomes their annual target, right? And so, the nice thing about this is you can set this at a school level, which you're seeing it here, but you can also identify any group of students based on any characteristics, any combination of grade level designation, school, and it'll automatically create a target based on that learning trajectory. And so, what that does is it creates a universal way that all schools are setting goals, it creates a universal standard, basically, that everybody's held accountable to in terms of moving that needle, and it allows for an analytic framework to be scaled across the district, so every time you report on data, you're reporting on the same way, against the same benchmarks, against the same definition. So, all of that together, what does that mean in terms of some KPIs that you could consider as you move this process forward? So the first, so to back up a little bit, so how did we come up with these, these sort of draft indicators for consideration? Is you've done a lot of work already around strategic planning and the portrait of a graduate, you have a lot of statements that are documented, guiding descriptors that talk about what it means to focus on learning, right? And so, all that we did in partnership with the district was to look at these statements, have the conversations with the district, knowing what we do and what we see across the country in terms of how districts measure these kinds of things, and come up with a draft set that you could use to start that dialogue. So the first one is academic proficiency. This one's easy. This is that one of just percent, percent of students that are meeting or exceeding state standards, right, or grade level. They're not, don't even necessarily need to be state standards, just grade-level standards, but normally, that's defined as that state-level standard is set by the state. The benchmark, this is, these are things that you should have some conversation around, but if you look at that slide that I gave you before, you know, maybe a place to start that conversation is, you know, the state 75th percentile is a reasonable place to start that conversation. But your annual school improvement goals, you wouldn't hold everybody to that standard, right? Your annual goals would be based off of those projections of the learning trajectories of the students leading up to the school year, and making sure that each and every year, every school is adding value above and beyond what the growth trajectories of the students were leading up until that school year. So that's the academic proficiency piece. The academic growth piece is similar in that you would transition your thinking away from just comparing growth to a national benchmark, to comparing growth in a more personalized way. So each and every student would have a personalized growth expectation based on their own histories and their own rates of growth, and then you would extend that out to the future to say, you know, here's where Jimmy, here's where Sally should outperform if, in fact, we move them along, you know, at rates that are greater than they've been growing in the past. And so, that would be the academic growth indicator. And then, once we move from those two really academic indicators of proficiency and growth, then we start going into some of the areas where things are a little bit more abstract, where we have to think about measurement a little bit differently. So one of the pieces that are in the guiding descriptors is around SEL competencies, and this one really needs to be developed, because, you know, that's why we have for this, you really, you need to choose a metric, a benchmark, and annual school improvement goals. So this one needs, you know, some dialogue and sort of some conversation about how to move this forward. The rest of these, our general recommendation is to link into your existing standards-based grading policy. That's one of the areas that is mentioned in those guiding descriptors. Well, the metric could be the percentage of students meeting or exceeding end-of-year grade-level communication standards via the district standards-based grading system. You're already doing this. This is a, this is a system that's already implemented across the district. Now, you may need to go back and look at the actual standards that are listed under communication to ensure that the way those standards are written reflect the definition of the construct as you intend it to be, but the great part about this is you have these kinds of systems already in place, they're already being implemented. So it makes perfect sense to link into these systems and collect the data, because you're already collecting it, and then it just becomes a reporting exercise to be able to use this data to go all the way up to the board level and everything in between. And that would be the same for critical thinking. You would do this as rating standards through your standards-based grading system, as well as collaboration. And these are all indicators that stem right from your guiding statements that were, that were part of the processes that you've gone through. I'm going to close by offering two other indicators that weren't explicitly listed in your guiding statements, but they're indicators that are sort of reflected in the collection of what those guiding statements represent, but they're also indicators that we see across a wide range of school districts, given sort of the current state of education and what communities are looking at. And so, the first one of that is participation in core extracurricular activities. The reason I bring this up is there's all, there's a whole lot of conversation going on in the education community around student connectedness and making sure that students feel connected to their education community and are actively being, you know, taking part in the broader educational learning community. And so, oftentimes, that's measured by how well or to the extent that students are participating in sort of extracurricular programming. So that's one thing to consider, that might be a way to capture that overall connectedness piece. And the other piece is academic access to advanced programs. This is driven a lot by the high schools in general, across the nation, not just in this community, right? Across the nation, high schools putting a lot of emphasis on AP and dual-credit course, coursework, and really pushing that students, before they graduate high school, have the opportunity to participate in advanced placement or dual-credit, or have the opportunity to earn college credit before they graduate. Well, when you cascade that down, right, you realize that that starts to become more and more of a reality or less and less of a reality depending on when or how students have access to advanced kinds of programming. And so, a lot of districts at the middle school levels are starting to track, you know, the percentage of students that are participating in above-grade-level programming or instruction, so you'd have to try to define that a little bit, but that's one way to get at sort of an early indication of the cohort of students that are, that are matriculating through the system that are ultimately going to go into high school, whether they're on track to participate in AP programming. So with that, I'm going to take questions.
Yeah, and again, as we move into the question portion, please feel free to ask for clarification from John. Just as a reminder, the remainder of those last several indicators So our initial focus really, again, is on sort of that conceptual measurement concept that John has, has talked us through quite a bit, and then looking at the two academic indicators. That's sort of the, the feedback that I'm hoping for from the board tonight in terms of helping us towards some next steps.
All right, anyone want to start us off tonight?
I'll go. It's pretty, pretty easy, my, well, easier, my question, I'm sure you get this quite a bit. How do you ensure standardized application across the board? Is that something that becomes a metric? If one of our outside, like an SEL, for example, if that's being measured, right? It's being measured at the classroom level most likely. How do you ensure that it's being equally distributed across a district of this kind of, this size?
So you're specifically mentioning the SEL without knowing how you're going to do that, it's hard for me to comment on it.
Okay, communication.
But you'd go probably one of two directions in this if you're, if you're like other, other districts, is, one of the directions is you will adopt some assessment that's in the marketplace, right? That's one direction, right? There, there are firms out there or offices out there that, that have surveys or assessments that, you know, by their nature, at least, you're collecting systematized or stand, you know, to, to a degree, standardized data because everyone's responding to the same set of questions and it's producing the same, you know, kind of scores. And, and so from that standpoint, you know, I think there's a, there's a level of standardization that you would be comfortable with. The, the other approach would be what you're doing for the other indicators, which would be to link into your standards-based grading process and, and to articulate or write a set of standards associated with SEL and then do that as part of your, your grading process. And so, that gets into the, to the, always the ongoing conversation of iterative reliability and having good rubrics and having good descriptors and, and training people and doing professional development of teachers so that everyone is in fact rating those standards against the same criteria. And so that's, you know, it's going to be one of those two, and you're going to approach them a little differently, but, you know, from what we've seen, this is a very doable thing. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it answers. I'm just wondering, have you seen it applied, you know, elsewhere and which one of those two options that you've seen applied works, tends to give more reliable information?
We've seen it in both places. I will say, in general, and I think this is more recent, but in general, we're seeing more adoption of, of SEL-type surveys than we have in the past. I mean, that seems to be sort of a movement and a direction, not just, I'm saying the nation in general, you know, is going, and there seems to be more and more options out in the marketplace for, for those pieces. So, so an SEL survey is, is, we're, we do see more than, than ratings of rubrics.
Member Ellis, is your question more along the lines of some of the stuff he was tying back to evidence-based grading, which would maybe be a little bit more subjective in the classroom? Is that more where your concern is, that across 13 buildings?
Correct.
That we don't get a uniformed look at critical thinking or communication more so than SEL?
Right.
In your description, it, it seemed more like that question. And so if it is, I want to make sure he hears that.
Right, right, yes. And I would imagine that some of it would come in play where you would look at, you know, do you have, you know, two or three schools in a certain grade, certain things that are happening where there's clear outliers one way or another? And then from there, you adjust at the board level? Because then what's, what do you do with the data, right? And I think Justin, you might have.
So I would answer, go ahead, and then I'll, I'll jump in after you. I mean, I would answer that question though, a couple of different ways, is certainly you have to be concerned with a degree of sort of iterative reliability, if you will, that everybody is rating those standards against common definitions, right? But I would follow that with, by saying, you have that challenge whether you adopt this as your methodology for a strategic indicator or not. You're using it already as you're grading in a report card. You, you, you have that challenge already, and anytime you can align multiple systems into one thing, it, the, it's going to get better because you're going to keep investing in it because it's, it's the way you're judging progress on students, it's the way you're doing report cards, it's the way the board's governing. So there's so much visibility in it and, and you feel comfortable continuing to invest in that, and it does produce good information.
And I, I would simply add, some of the, the work that I alluded to before we would get into some of those things falls exactly into that category. When we have, when we've had these conversations, the, the teachers on the district leadership team have been the ones to say, you know, we have used some of these things in, in, at a building level and we have conversations as, as partners on a grade level team, but that iterative reliability across the district is something that we do want to talk about. You'll actually hear later tonight, hopefully not too much later, about some of the work we've been doing around professional learning and some of that iterative reliability already. And so it's something that we're, as we're working toward that district-wide consistency, it certainly is on our minds as well.
Right, and I would imagine, once you're gathering that data, like the communications data in aggregate, you're going to see a little bit better what that looks like. So, you know, in the first few years, I would imagine that the data's going to be kind of, could be all over the place, could be consistent, but more likely than not, you're going to see more variation in the, in the beginning than you might see later on if things become more robust.
I mean, you'd hope through any continuous quality improvement process that it always gets, you know, that it always gets better. Absolutely. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, I think, if I understood this right, you're already doing this and you're already reporting on some of these, so, so you're well along your way in terms of, you know, continuing to, to refine it.
Member Doshi?
Tracy and I had a chance to dive into this for over an hour earlier today.
Okay.
And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait because I'm guessing a lot of you will, will go the direction that Tracy and I already went.
President Harris?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions, but I'm trying to think about how to frame them in my head. I guess the one question prepared to ask now is, so, I'm trying to think of, of the end, of the package that our administration's going to deliver to the board and the community, and what we're going to be communicating out about what our expectations are. So, looking at all these strategic indicators, are, like, I guess, let's just think about proficiency as, as the easiest one to kind of put our, wrap our minds around. Are we going to have a, is it going to be like ESSA, where we have a goal and we, we stair-step it along the years? Like in year one, we want to be here, year two, we're going to be here, year three, we're going to be here? Are we going, like, how, what's it going to look like exactly?
So, at the school, so there's two levels of that question, right? So, at the school improvement level, there's going to be annual improvement targets, right? So it's this idea that at the strategic level, and I have the image of the dashboard up in terms of like sort of what a representation or a deliverable of this would be eventually to the board and to the community would be some kind of a dashboard that has all of these metrics on it, right? But the annual improvement goals or the annual targets, the continuous quality improvement processes would be implemented through the school improvement planning process, right? And those targets would be set with those projections. And so, every school would have their own improvement target, right, for the school year. And of course, that information would flow up to, to the board. But one of the things that I always advise, you know, boards as they think about governance is the, certainly you're governing the entire school district and you're going to aggregate metrics all the way up to the system level, but, you know, part of it is the fact that you are, you do have lots of schools and lots of schools that are on their own journey. And so, making sure that those annual improvement targets are, you know, rigorous but also attainable at the school level is really, really important. So the point is, you're going to have different targets for different schools every year. It's not going to be this, this universal standard. But you do want to go through the process at the strategic level of that benchmark. I just threw the 75th, you know, sort of, you know, percentile out there. So you do have some context as a board of education of where is the system and are we moving closer to our goal overall? And that would, that would be more of a multi-year target that wouldn't change every year. It would, you would hopefully get there, you know, within a preset amount of time.
So is the expectation, so we could go through the, the school buildings and, and you've, you've already shown us how, where they are currently and how there's some, some diversity there in terms of, of existing gaps, I guess. So, is the end result, I mean, I don't know, are we talking about a five-year plan here? I mean, is the end result going to be, everybody's going to be here and school A needs to take bigger leaps each year to get here and school B's leaps are going to be a little bit smaller? Everybody should be here by the end of the journey? Or what, what is the, the, the end result going to look like?
The long, the long-term goal would be that everybody hits that, that longer-term target that you set at the board, right? But it's going to be, every school is going to be on their own journey as, as these annual improvements are.
Sure.
The, the most important piece is that the schools are hitting their annual improvement targets.
Right.
And that might take a much longer period of time for some schools, you know, to reach that, that overall strategic benchmark that you set as a board. Some schools might take a lot longer than five years, some schools might take, you know, less. But they'll always have to keep incrementing through that goal-setting process. So, I would just urge the board to, to not think about holding every school to a common standard.
Right.
Instead, have a systematized way to ensure that all schools are improving each and every year and every students are better off each and every year as a result of the efforts of the school improvement process, right? And just governing that process as a board, I think, you know, is, is a better way to look at it.
And it allows for schools on both sides of that board-level metric to have individualized goals to continue to beat their own projections. So where some schools will still be approaching a district-set metric, other schools will already have achieved that or be a little bit beyond it, but they will still have an annual goal to continue to meet their projections and continue to see improvement.
And just a couple of things to piggyback off of. The state has that kind of stair-stepping model already built into the IAR. I'm a little bit weary of those models, especially after what we've experienced with No Child Left Behind from, you know, 2001 by 2014, 100% of kids were supposed to be at grade level or above. There are so many reasons why that isn't appropriate. What we really want to hit with this particular model, and I want to underscore again what John said, is that every school is at a different path on their journey, but how are we making sure that every school grows each year by what the model will show us? And then, in terms of the overall district, what is that target that we want to set? And this is what the DLT can help us with, is that we want all the schools collectively in District 58 to be in the top quartile in the state of Illinois, or at the top 20% or the top 10%. And, you know, based on historic data, we can make a determination for that. I would be cautious, though, about developing any model that says, you know, by 2032, 100% of the kids will be here. We know from history that that just isn't a good model, and it's not, quite frankly, a realistic model that can work. And so what I like about what we're presenting in the DLT is going to help us, you know, further fine-tune this, is that we're looking at growth, we're looking at achievement, but we're also recognizing that individuals as students start at different points and buildings start at different points, but we're holding ourselves accountable for where did they start and what do we expect them to grow each year?
That's helpful, thank you.
It's really, it's really an accountability system that's really built on growth.
Which is, you know, through the conversations that we've had, not only at DLT but at the board table, that was one of the biggest takeaways that we've had as an administration over the last, you know, year, is how do we develop a system that of course always looks at achievement but also looks at growth at the same time, looking at both of those?
And what's hard to understand sometimes is aggregate improvements in proficiency is not growth. Those are two kind of different things. And so, a lot of times what's happened in schools is they've, they've, they've dealt with it by just having aggregate improvements in proficiency. They just like, let's, let's increase grade five math by 5%. That's an aggregate improvement in proficiency. That's not like a strict growth measure. And so, you know, I think looking at strict growth measures, tracking the same kids over time against their own learning trajectories is a much more sensitive way to get at whether or not you're actually moving the needle.
Member Hannas?
My questions are all mostly much more related to what I think will culminate with the more portrait of a graduate, less objective type things. And I know that's something that we're working on actively, kind of creating what those descriptors are going to be like and how we're going to run them and, and kind of those committees who are focusing on that. So I don't have anything super directly related to this. I think we're, we're going in that direction and I'm anxious to learn more about that as we develop that over time.
Thank you.
I, I, Karan, I had seen this the second time around.
Member Olchek?
I guess, what are the next steps? What, what input do you need from us? Because I, I guess I expected us to be kind of at the point of dashboard by now, where we're actually kind of implementing some of these, you know, external consulting guidelines where we're actually making internal decisions.
Right, so, next steps coming out of tonight would be the potential of an action item at the next regular meeting in March, which would be, which is, I would be asking us to look at adopting those first two performance indicators. And what, what the adoption of that would do would allow us to then begin moving forward with those as drivers for our school improvement planning process going into the 22, 23 school year. And so, that's when we would start to engage, you know, this is, we're, we're really just at the point where ECR in the past couple of weeks has digested and inputted all of the data that we have given them historically. And so we are at the, we are at the beginning stages now of being able to get a look at some of that dashboard with our real data. And so that will come back regularly over the next few months. But the next step really is, are we, are we comfortable with those academic indicators as we, as we begin to move forward? And then, developing, and we've had this conversation at DLT, a group to begin the work in earnest. I mean, Emily, you're right that we are working on it at the conversation level. We don't yet have, we don't have an active committee that necessarily has the right representation to dive into those conversations around those, those next sets of descriptors. So it would be forming those, finding the, you know, building that, that representation and beginning work on those later indicators so that six, eight months from now, we can be having this next level conversation about are we ready to adopt those? Does that help, Steve?
Yeah, so it's basically those two slides that had the 75 and 85%. We're just kind of signing off on that, or?
Well, I mean, and we'll ask for, yeah. I mean, essentially, what I want to leave tonight with is, is there anything else you'll need from me in two weeks to be comfortable moving forward with those two indicators? Which also, you know, the growth one in particular is, is a signal that yes, we are, we are aligning with the idea of the, the growth measurement that John's talking about tonight where we're really looking at that, that personalized projection piece for student growth and then by extension, growth of any group of students.
All right, I guess, you know, another follow-up question, maybe Karan, Tracy, like, is there any discussion that was kind of fruitful at DLT? I'm sure there was fruitful discussion, but is there anything you kind of shared, like, where we would want to potentially go a different direction or, or kind of further supporting what we're seeing here today? I guess I, I, I think it's pretty clear-cut, just go and do, right? Maybe it's not that clear-cut.
A couple of thoughts. One, a lot of credit to Justin to get us to a point where this feels pretty obvious and pretty easy to like sign off on. We just introduced six different indicators that we haven't talked about before as a board of education. And we all feel like, yep, that makes sense as the right direction to go. I'm just like kind of reading the room a little bit. So, I think one thing as a board for us to do is to say, do we agree that academic growth, academic proficiency, SEL, collaboration, communication, like critical thinking, these are all things that we agree are going to be the things that we care about, talking about when we talk about where our students are starting, mid-year growth, end-of-year results, over the course of three, five-year projections, how are we trending around metrics? Those are the six things that we'll continue to come back to. So, signal on that is, I'm guessing, one thing that Justin will need, more specifically, targets for academic proficiency and academic growth. What do we want to see there? Do we want to see things like, well, we want to be at the 75th percentile among all elementary schools across the state? Which then gives Justin and Kevin and their teams direction on, well, if we want to get there, then we need these schools to hit these goals and these schools to hit these goals. And in the aggregate, we'll be at the 75th percentile, right? And so, that gives them the next steps to be able to set the 22, 23 school improvement targets. I'm not hearing a lot of dissonance, but as long as we're speaking with one voice and giving them direction that that's what you're sharing looks really good, they can start to put the plans together to get those benchmarks at the district level and then the ongoing individual school targets drafted and prepared and shopped around with their principals to make sure that they're ready to go for the next school year.
Well, I guess my reaction to the, the benchmarks and whether we're top quartile or whatever percentage we look at is, I don't know, I like to think we're elitist in some fashion in DuPage versus the rest of the state, so why would we compare ourselves versus the larger states? You know, do we want to potentially look at surrounding neighborhoods or, or similar districts, you know, versus unit districts?
That actually came up at DLT. John, do you want to, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so when you think about this conversation of sort of what should be this normative reference if we're going to talk about kind of where we should be? So, when you, when you think about that, there's, there's a few approaches you could take, right? And certainly the, the peer group approach that you, that how it's referred to as you, as you've described it, is trying to identify, you know, are there districts in the surrounding land area that we kind of want to bring together as a peer group, see where they are, and then we want to kind of, you know, set ourselves accordingly. In our experience, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, you know, in, in, in terms of an approach, but in our experience, is it's not as meaningful and it tends to, it tends to create some unproductive kinds of activity because it's just hard to get a peer group that looks in terms of an approach, but in our experience, is it's not as meaningful, and it tends to, it tends to create some unproductive kinds of activity, um, because it's just hard to get a peer group that looks like, like you. And you're always going to find, there's always going to be people that think certain district should be in, and certain district should be out, and this one's kind of like us, this one isn't like us, and, well, we should be there, but since we have a larger percentage of this, maybe we should be a little bit lower. It, it just starts to be really unproductive, right? And so, we, what we advise is if you're going to go the sort of the peer group route, right, there, there is another option of going of what we call a virtual peer group, which is, you don't actually choose the districts, right, but you use all of the information that's available across the state of Illinois for all the districts, and the interrelationship of all the variables that affect, and sort of those contextual factors that affect outcomes, and you, and you just build a model that gives you your benchmark, basically, given your set of characteristics, given the interrelationship of all these characteristics and their impact on outcomes that we know exist across the state, here's your benchmark. So it becomes a virtual peer group because it's model-derived. So you don't, you can't know which districts it is, but you, but it has the definition of where you should outperform, given your set of characteristics and what we know about-
What would be some of those characteristics, um, off the top of your head?
I mean, some of the common ones that you think when you build these kinds of models are, so there's, there's a set of characteristics. There's characteristics that deal with the backdrop of the community, so there's characteristics like equalizes housing values, you know, the things that just capture sort of that community factor, right? Then, then there's variables associated with the student body that usually go into these models. It could be things like low income, it could be things like other designations of students, right? Depending on, we don't advise putting finance in those models, but, but some people do put finance in those models, because usually finance is one of the outcomes you want to measure against a model like that. So, you don't want to put it in the model if you also want to measure against it. So, but usually, it's, it's some contextual factors of the community and some, um, student-level characteristics, and, and maybe some district-level characteristics that go into that model. And then it's analyzed across the whole state of Illinois data sets to then give you a benchmark of where you should be given those characteristics. But it's virtual in the sense you'll never know who those districts are, it's model-derived.
Okay.
So that, but that's one, that's one approach. Uh, and then the other approach, though, is just basically from a value standpoint, just using the state of Illinois, right, as your benchmark, and just saying, we want to be in the upper quartile, or we want to be in the top 5% or top 10%, you know, and going that way. All three are, you know, are okay, but I would, given my experience, I would, I would shy away from the, the peer group unless you guys can all line up on who your peers are.
No, we haven't been able to do that.
It's, it's not often that, that you can line up who your peers are really easily.
That was a discussion at DLT earlier today about just how the community approaches, and so, this recommendation is definitely something that we work towards.
I definitely don't think there's value in looking at, like John said, similar EAVs, similar, um, low-income, similar, um, you know, English learners, similar special education. The, the problem with, with peer groups, and if you look at the 99-Feeters, it's a perfect example. You know, even though we may border Woodridge, completely different, or different set of circumstances, or, you know, Center Cast may be similar in terms of home values, but they have two schools versus, you know, 13. And, and so it's very tough to find, who is that identical twin to Downers Grove, and are they close to us? That being said, in the data, I think you can get at it virtually in the same manner that we're trying to accomplish, because, you know, I, I don't think there's anyone in the district leadership team that doesn't feel that a legitimate question from our community is like, okay, well, here are your numbers, but how does that compare to anyone else, right? And so we, we expect that question. We get that question a lot from not only community members, but our realtors and, and things like that. And so, we do need to be able to answer that question. It's, it's how do we go about that in the most productive way?
So, so then, in the virtual aspect of this, is there a capability to match up, you know, school, like, essentially, a, a virtual peer group that ma, not peers in the community, but like, a virtual group that matches the circumstances of all 13 of our schools?
Correct. That's what it does.
And then it's, then it's, so it'd be 13 schools that kind of fit our 13 schools, and then maybe another 13 on top, and then they're, are they all matching up?
It takes into account all that information, yeah.
I think, what, what he, yeah, I think what, I think the output you're looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, is, I want to know, based on that virtual model, where should LCERA be?
Correct.
A year from now. And I think what John's suggesting is, who would be able to help you set district-wide benchmarks and school-level benchmarks for, that are predicted off of historical performance of that virtual peer group?
Yeah.
Sure, that's all doable, absolutely.
That's how we'll do it, okay.
And we'd have that by tomorrow.
Yesterday.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We already created it.
We're, we're running models all the time, so we have lots of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's clear, thank you.
But I don't want to confuse that, if I can make one up, but I would, I don't want to confuse that with still, those wouldn't be your annual improvement targets.
No, no.
Those would be sort of your, your benchmarks that you're striving to outperform, but the annual improvement targets would still come from the growth projections.
Right, those are just your comparables.
Yes, exactly. That would replace the idea of like a peer group for sort of broader benchmarking, or, or longer-term targets.
Yeah, so you're pulling like a Pierce Downer, and a Kingsley, and a Herrick, and an only, and that, like, creating-
But the virtual does, does it sort of-
Yep.
Just through a model process?
Yep.
Which is a much more modern way to do it. I mean, even, even, even in sort of research environments, it's kind of moving away from that whole like case-control kind of scenario to, you know, be more model-derived estimates.
Any other comments or questions? Then I, I guess I'll just kind of wrap it up by saying, first of all, um, I really appreciate your description of, of growth. I think one of the things, and I've been one of the people banging my fist here, kind of really wanting to look at some real growth numbers, and I'm not the only one. It's been a, a, a pretty universal thing. I think we really want to have a better understanding of how our individual, we may be looking at it in the aggregate, but we want to know that, that we're looking at that same growth data that our buildings then look at, at the building level, and the classrooms, look at the classroom level, and, and the teachers look at, at the individual student level. And I think that's really, really important to us. Um, I like what you're saying here, you know, when I looked at some of the sample data, and, and I, I was kind of highlighting it, this is before I looked at the percent, the first thing I noticed and sort of knocked off was anybody that did fall, uh, any group that fell below that, that top quartile. And so I think that, I think that is a good, a good place to start. Uh, one of the things that I, I wanted to bring up, and this might not really be part of this, and so you can steer me, uh, to a later date if it, if it makes more sense, but when I was looking at some of the, you know, kind of our raw data and what, what we look at, when we tend to look at, at subgroups, right, like, we look at, at income, we look at race, we look at, you know, um, are they, do they speak English in the home, you know, that, that kind of stuff. One of the things I think I would like to make sure that we look at when we, when we look at this is, uh, sort of almost break them up into peer groups of, here are our high, um, here are our high achievement kids, and as an aggregate, do our high achievement kids still have high growth? And our low achievement kids, do they, you know, so we look at them almost, we had talked about before, like those four quadrants. I, I want to make sure we kind of take a look at those students so that we, we know that, great, we're, we're looking at it in the aggregate, and we're saying, this school had a, a growth percentile of this, and they're now achieving much higher, they've, they're now in the 79th percentile, you know, for the state, and, and that's fantastic. But I do want to know also that our schools that are doing well, or our subgroups that are doing well, that we're not sort of just letting them coast and, and, and just moving all of our resources somewhere else. Um, I think there's another subgroup, I think, that we don't talk about enough, and maybe it's not, maybe you can tell me it's not a big deal in our district, uh, but it's something that a few years ago I heard another district talk about, and intrigued me, was, um, mobility, you know, of our groups that are not performing well. Uh, in, if you look at their history, how long have they been within our district? So are, are we seeing more success for kids that have come into our district and spent a, a significant amount of time in our district? And does that vary differently from, from kids that maybe have only spent the last six months, or year, or two years with us, depending, and I, I would just be interested in that as a metric, and I don't know how easily that is able to do in the tool, but those are some of the things I think when, when we look at performance, I'd like to, uh, to take a peek at.
Yeah, and I'll just, from the district perspective, one of the things, and, and John will, I think, affirm this, that we're excited about with his, with the model that ECR has, is that one- Really, it will become a, a conversation between district leadership team and, and buildings as part of the school improvement process, and then the board in terms of which groups do we want to monitor and, and report out, and those things. Next week, you'll hear me talk about the beginning of some of ISB's subgroup and equity monitoring, which is a new initiative. We also will have, um, the SS stuff will come back around this coming fall with the school report card, so we'll be back to those conversations. The difference being now, we'll have a lot of internal power to really cut that data in any way we want to and take a look at some of those projections. So, in terms of the, the specifics, I think that is yet to come, but the, but the capability and, and our ability to have much more readily available information that, that, that looks from the same level, like, like John's talked about, strategic all the way down, we, this is, this is what gives us the power to do that very quickly.
And then the one thing I would just echo with that is, um, the, with the relationship with ECR, yeah, once that, once those student groups get sent over to us, because we're measuring individual student growth at the, at the student level, personalized to the student, once that data gets loaded, any variables, you can do this at any time, is any combination of anything that you want to look at growth, you, you are going to have a transparency into growth you've never had before. I mean, you're going to be able to look at growth any which way you want to look at growth, and it's just going to kind of fall out. And so, um, you know, you mentioned specifically about like, how, yeah, it's kind of hard to see this. This is one of the, the, um, the visualizations that the administration would have access to, where you're looking at sort of the blue is the expected growth range, where we're laying with some benchmarks overlaid on it. In the platform, you could very easily just say, just isolate to my historically high-performing kids, just isolate to my historically low-performing kids, just isolate to kids in this school that are male, that have IEPs, that are, any, it, you know, any combination of any grouping that's in the system will immediately generate what that growth rate is. And so, um, you will have the ability, and the administration will have the ability to look very granular, granularly into growth, you know, across any, any variables.
And Justin, just to self-regulate my expectations, and kind of when we get to that point, what, how would you kind of guide me?
So, as I said, we're, I, in, within the next couple of months, we are, we are gaining, we've, we've got access to the dashboard. We haven't had the full next levels of trainings. I would hope that we'd be training our full administrative team on interacting with the dashboard later this spring. We've just got to, you know, I, it's, it's, it just needs to be a thoughtful rollout, so that once we start sharing the information, everyone is comfortable with using it and accessing it. But my hope is that our building-level teams by May and June are using this dashboard as part of their school improvement planning conversations, to be able to have some of those things. And then, again, by the time we're doing spring data, I mean, I did kind of mention actually a couple of weeks ago that that may be the last time we look at data in the, the format that we've looked at it for a decade. We may, we, we could start bringing in some different visualizations to see what that looks like. I think it'll be a process where I bring some things to you, and you say, we like that one, and I'd rather see this one look this way, and then we'll bring it back around again. But I would say our spring data set should be incorporating a lot of these visualizations.
Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate, the two big ones that we've been focusing in on our board, it's the achievement and then the growth. That's coming first. The rest of the stuff are on the key performance, um, indicators in terms of, you know, community involvement, or communication, or those types of things. That's one of the things that we're going to continue, as we shared, to work with DLT. We need to make sure that if we're using our standards-based grading approach, and this is a concern that our teacher shared in DLT as well, that we've got some pretty solid inner-rated reliability prior to, you know, really fine-tuning and finishing that off. So this will certainly come in increments, but Steve, to your question, what, what you're seeing now, that's the first step that we're asking the board to approve in March. And then the rest of those measurements for the, the remainder of the portion of graduate, that comes over time as we work through it. But the big ones are coming first.
Thanks, Scott. All right, I'm, I'm going to wrap it up with, with one last question, and that is, I think that all of us as a board here can really sort of coalesce and understand what, when we're talking about, um, achievement, what the 75 percentile means. Have maybe a little bit, uh, more clarity put on, is what does it mean to have a benchmark of 85% in growth?
So, what, what it means if you, so there's lots of ways that you can, um, measure growth. And what growth means in an, in an analytic sense is, the, the gap between where you were projected to be and where you actually ended up. It's that difference, that, that, that's the construct of growth, and that's in the industry across, right? That's, growth is defined as where you were projected to be against where you actually ended up, right? So the benchmark of 85%, now sometimes, let me back up. One of the metrics, and this is one of the metrics that will fall out of the relationship, is you can measure that on the metric of a Z, a Z scale or an effect size, so you have a continuous metric of growth, right? And so there are ways that you can set benchmarks that way. In our experience, though, it becomes a little bit more, um, it's harder to communicate at a board level and a community level when you're talking about those a little bit more scientific metrics. So what we, what we propose for that is, this 85% benchmark is basically that a student is meeting or exceeding their projection within the error rate. So, if, I'll give you, I'll give you a specific example of what that means. So if you were to consider this, trying to go back to that chart. Those blue lines are the expected range.
Okay.
If you outperform those blue lines, you've done greater than expected. If you're within those blue lines, you're expected. If you are lower than those blue lines, you're lower than expected. So 85% would be adding up all the kids that are within the blue line or above the blue line. Those are, those are students that were within the error interval of meeting their growth expectation, right, or exceeding it.
Right. So, yeah, so for clarity, and that's kind of what I was assuming it was, but, um, we, we're saying, our goal isn't in an aggregate of, of 85% growth, right? We're saying that 85% or above are at or above sort of that full-year growth, uh, assessment projection that we, that we expect them to be at, correct?
That's right. That's right.
And what sort of tool or analysis will we be looking at for the 15% that are off to sort of analyze how far off they, you know, is there a tool that you normally do to say, all right, we have 15%, that's great, we're at 15%, that's our goal, but this is where we're at on, on the students that are off?
So, it's hard to get, this is just one snippet of one screen, but when you start interacting with these charts, is you can quickly, with, you know, with one, like, you can identify all the students that were below that bar, right? Then you can hit another button that will generate insights on those students, but will give you more information about those students. So you'll, you'll be able to, to not only identify who the students are that didn't meet their growth expectations, you'll be able to learn more information about them so that you can take action on them. So the, the tools will allow you to have that sort of interactivity, um, so you have a better understanding of what to do with those students and take action on them.
And I'm assuming at some point you guys will be working on, anybody that falls out of that category would get some kind of action plan?
So, it would, it would be, this would be the kind of information that would then become incorporated into those data meetings that are happening at buildings at least three times a year, and, and likely more often for many of the students who are below those blue lines. And so, yeah, it, it becomes one more piece of information to clearly identify, okay, now we're looking at these students, and then we decide, is there action already in place that the other, either needs to be adjusted, or isn't, hasn't caught yet? Or if there's not some support provided for those students, then we would take a look at why that is and what that would look like. So really, you know, the, the action out of it is, is again, going to come from our, our data teaming process that we've worked to, um, to really streamline across the district and standardize over the past few years.
One thing I would echo that's really important, though, is that green horizontal line, that's sort of the state, that's, that's the proficiency, this example, this is not like your data, this is just an example.
Right.
That green horizontal line is the state-level standard, right? So, you're going to take action on a kid much differently. So see that, that dot way up in the right that's below the blue line, and way above the state? That kid might be at the 99th national percentile, but he's still, but he, but he fell off his trend. You're going to deal with that student a heck of a lot differently than you're going to deal with a student that is below their growth expectation, that are, that's low proficiency. So there's re, there's regions of this graph, so you're going to find kids that have, that didn't meet their growth expectation, but are still really high perform, performers in terms of proficiency.
Right.
And so, the nice thing about this framework is, every region of this graph, there's a different storyline of students. So there's really high-performing kids that aren't meeting their potential, there's really low-performing students that are outperforming their potential, but there's also low-performing students that are falling further behind. And so the ability to interact and identify, but those are probably different sets of actions.
Perfect. Um, all right. So, what they're looking for us in general is, is the guidance to move forward. I, I think we had consensus that the top quartile was, was good on achievement. Do we feel good about giving guidance on the 85% on, on the growth side?
Yes, thank you.
Do you feel like you have everything you need, Justin?
I do.
I guess, just on that top quartile, though, are we, are we talking about the state? Are we talking about virtual peer- Are we talking about virtual peer groups? What, what's, where do we kind of leave that?
So the metric as presented tonight is the top quart, the 75th percentile of the state when you, when, as John mentioned, when you rank top to bottom, every schools meets and exceeds on the state assessment.
But that's not, it's not, as it currently written, it's not 85th percentile of your virtual peer group. That would be a different number.
Yeah, I guess based on me learning about virtual peer groups, I guess I'm, I always want more, right?
Yes.
So, I guess, why wouldn't we do that?
I mean, you know, I'll, I'll.
There's, there's no right or wrong answer here. This is just kind of a, you know, an approach that feels comfortable. But I will say, if you went the virtual peer group where you're not going to set it at the 85th percentile of a virtual, that's a really, probably really, really high bar. You know, if you're going to go the virtual peer group route, you're probably going to go with outperforming the virtual, virtual peer group.
So in that case, are you, are you looking at like the 50th percentile?
Yeah.
More like a map.
You're probably looking at better than, because 50th just means you meet if you want to outperform.
Correct. Anything above the 50th percentile, you'd be outperforming your, your peer group. Is there a way to look at both as we're still kind of sorting this out? And so what I mean by that, is there a way to see if we, were to set it at the, you know, District 58's goal in the aggregate is to have all of our schools performing at the 75th percentile or better, but then also take a look at our peer group and maybe model that on the side for a given period of time, just to see what that looks like?
Sure.
Yeah, so this is a great example of something that rather than trying to work it out tonight, we can bring back in a couple of weeks, you know, when we, when we present sort of a motion to move forward with the target. Here's a couple of different ways to look at it. And, you know, there's also the possibility of adopting the metric without the defined benchmark yet. If we feel like we need more time on that and a better look at it before we say this is going to be our, you know, before we say the 75th percentile against this or the 50th percentile against that, we can start by saying, we're going to use this measurement and then we can start to build things out as we go forward. So I can, I can come back with some more thoughts along those two when we would come back before a motion in March.
But I think that's a really good point because you, the, the metric itself is distinct from the benchmark you're applying to the metric. So you could move forward adopting the metrics if you're still working on the benchmark.
And I just want to clarify for, for the people listening at home, when I say the 50th percentile, please know, I'm not suggesting that District 58 schools, we're, we're good with a 50% on a test or something like that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if we all start at the same point with a peer group, in order to outperform the peer group, you would have to be at the 51st percentile or better. I know sometimes when we throw out numbers like that, somebody might say, well, the superintendent would have been happy if just half of it. No, that's, that's not what I'm saying at all. So I just want to be very clear with that.
I think in a couple of weeks, if we're going to be at the point where we're not just talking about the metrics rush, you're starting to talk about the benchmarks, I'd love to see a couple of options around benchmarks to give us a sense for what are our choices in terms of what we could be setting as goals for us at the board level? That, I think, once we can get to that answer, I think for Justin and Kevin to give you some signals on, all right, now I know what our target is as a district, I can start working with each of our, start thinking through what their individual goals are going to be.
Right. Well, and again, that in this model, the building targets can begin to be set just by the projections for the individual buildings. What it comes down to, the metric is much more of the long-term goal than next year's goal. So I think I can, we'll bring it back on for the, for the March 14th potentially as a discussion item with potential action. If we're comfortable on the 14th of March, that's great. If we need to go another meeting, I, that, that's okay. If we get much past April, it will get challenging for us to truly incorporate this with the, the school improvement planning for the following year. So that's just kind of the, the timeline. But I think certainly bringing back some, some additional things to consider as we get a little more specific on the 14th is appropriate.
I don't know who, who mentioned, I don't know if it was Justin or Kevin, but there is some familiarity with, with, I think, comparing us to the state, and we have history. So there could be some advantage to staying on that metric so that when we look back historically, we can kind of see that trend. While also, if there's a way to capture data compared to our peer group, be capturing that and let us start having a dialogue around that, even if that's not our, our goal, so that maybe as we go out to full strategic planning in, in a year and a half or two years from now, we may find that that, as we go out even further, that we may want to start pivoting in that direction, even if that's not something we're ready to do over the next two school years. Because it sounds like you want a little bit of guidance on, on where those targets should be coming out of this meeting. And if we want to make sure that we hit some, hit timelines so that we're getting some of this data by the end of the year, I'm happy to give you that, that guidance. Now, if you want a few more weeks to see if you can make another recommendation, I'm okay with that as well. I just, I want to make sure that I'm clear on what you need from us.
I feel very comfortable with what we, the conversation we've had tonight, leading us to a good conversation on March 14th around this topic, and that we're going to be in good shape to, to meet those timelines. And again, to be clear, we'll, these will be metrics that we'll start to apply going into next year. We'll start to see some of the formatting of the data in the spring. I just want to be careful we're not setting the target too early. We'll see the, the data formatted, but we won't necessarily see all of those projections applied until we begin next school year.
Yeah, understood. We appreciate your time and thank you, Justin.
Thank you. So we did place these items in order of projected length of discussion. So I think we can, hopefully we'll be able to move through the rest of these. There's certainly a lot more information to go through tonight. Our next topic is an update on the dual language program. And to start us off, I'm going to invite Jason Lind, the principal of El Sierra, to come up and take us through the first couple of slides, most appropriate as we're talking about the history of the program, as Jason was the first principal to open the, what was then the biliteracy program years ago.
Thank you. As Justin said, the program began at El Sierra back in 2014, which is my first year at El Sierra as well. That year, we had 18 students in the dual language program, and it was a combination of kindergarten and first grade students in one classroom. The program then moved to Kingsley and is currently spread across three schools, including O'Neil and El Sierra and Kingsley. This fall, we opened with 50 students in first through eighth grade, and we have been working hard with this program and the model that we have currently. There are now five dual language teachers and one bilingual resource teacher and one bilingual speech pathologist who support the program along with their additional staff, particularly at El Sierra. However, not all the staff listed are allocated full-time to the dual language program. Bilingual education is required when there are 20 or more EL eligible students from the same language in attendance at one school or one center. Typically, this applies usually about two to three of our schools. This year, it just applies Indian Trail and El Sierra who qualify for that. Since the beginning of the program, we have invited all EL students with Spanish-speaking heritage to participate in the program. Ultimately, families whose students are eligible for the program are given the choice of enrolling their children in the dual language program. In a one-way dual language program, which is our current program, students in the program are eligible based upon their native language being Spanish or Spanish being spoken in their household, as well as their qualifications for EL services. These students receive their academic instruction in English and Spanish throughout their school day. And current eligibility criteria is the following. Students that answered yes on the home language survey to speak another language at home, which would be Spanish, were screened with the WIDA model. If a student received a score of 5.0 or lower on this assessment, the family was offered an opportunity to be a part of the dual language program. This table right here shows each cohort over the years and, you know, how the, the number of students through the program. So as you can see here, in 2014, we have, our kindergarten had 10 students, and you can follow that orange track all the way down there to where they are in seventh grade. You can file each color for that cohort of students, just to kind of see the enrollment trend over the time of the program. And again, this started in 2014, and it's continuing through this year as well.
Thanks, Jason. One other thing to note on this chart, once students are enrolled in a dual language program, we rarely see beyond first grade the addition of students. The only situation in which that would typically happen is if a student moved into District 58 who had already been participating in a dual language program. Research and practicality tells us once you're beyond about second grade, the level of immersion that's needed to be successful is, is difficult to attain in those programs. So that's why you'll see the numbers tend to go down and not up. In some cases, you'll see an increase from movements, but just as we think about the future of the program, that's always been one of the things to consider. So as the board is aware, we've had our dual language committee meeting over the course of this year. And so after reflecting on, on a lot of pieces, you know, when we look at the history of the program, there are a lot of strengths. We've had a dedicated staff who has really worked hard to build this program and has grown year after year. Our families have remained committed and invested in the program. We have seen growth each year, not only in, in adding a grade level each year for the past nine or eight years, excuse me, but also in the amount of resources that we have been able to obtain that are not only, some resources that are available in Spanish, but others that are specifically designed to teach Spanish language arts and things like that. And we've worked hard to increase the opportunity for the students in this program to have interactions that are meaningful during the school day with the, their monolingual peers. That's one of the concerns of a one-way dual program is that the, the students are essentially in a self-contained classroom, and so they don't necessarily get the opportunities to make connections with their, their peers outside of those programs. As we reflect back on the past eight years of the program, the committee did also recognize there have been some things that haven't stayed as consistent. We've, we have had four different administrators as part of program leadership over the past eight years. The location began at El Sierra, changed to Kingsley, some students moved to El Sierra, and now we're actually spread across three buildings. We've worked to develop a variety of program structures over the past several years, always with the intention of best meeting the needs of our, needs, excuse me, of our students. But those structures have not necessarily been consistent year after year. And as the number of students in the program has increased, there becomes a greater need for additional support services that are delivered by bilingual staff as well. And so as we look to areas of opportunity, that column talks about some of those things. As the board will remember, we had a dual language committee running for a few years prior to the pandemic, really, and prior to the, the winter of 2019. And at that point, the committee reviewed a lot of research, visited other programs, and there was energy behind the exploration of what's called a two-way dual language program. We were faced with some long-term budget concerns and, and any, any program growth was essentially put on hold for further conversation, and then obviously COVID hit. And so our committee work had been also suspended during that point in time. So as we think about where we're at now, there's a lot of words here, but our seventh and eighth graders are at O'Neil, and they receive two periods of instruction in Spanish. Our fifth and sixth graders in the program are at Kingsley. Our students in grades two through four at El, excuse me, one through four at El Sierra. And there's, again, a variety of models here that include the combination of a dual language teacher providing instruction as well as a classroom teacher, or what we in this context refer to as a monolingual homeroom teacher providing instruction, just to, to make that distinction. This year, after looking at the, the individual needs of our first grade students in the dual language program, we actually restructured a bit, and those students are in a full day classroom, receiving all of their instruction from a dual language teacher at this point in time. And so really, this just details the idea that we have a number of different models running even at this moment, and that's one of the things we need to continue to think about. And as you're aware, this year, as we were going, undergoing program review, we paused the entrance of kindergarten students into a dual language program, so we don't have a formal dual language program. The students who we are obligated per ISB regulation to provide Spanish instruction do receive that instruction, and there are about 10 students in that, in that program right now. So again, our committee this year has engaged with a number of experts, because one of the things that we've recognized is that though a lot of us have experience and longevity with the program here in District 58, there, there really aren't many of us on the dual language committee and certainly none of the administrative staff who have had experience with developing a new program. And so seeking the advice of experts who have was really beneficial for our, our conversations. We've also sent some surveys out to current dual language students, current dual language families. We again spent some time looking at the work that was done in 2017 through 2019. We also sent an interest survey to certainly not all families, but families that are already in our system that would have siblings or that are preschool families, to get a sampling of families that would have an incoming kindergarten student either next fall or the following fall, to gauge whether there was interest in a broader two-way dual language program within the community. And then in the, after all of that, we've in the past two and a half weeks had a couple of meetings of this group to really go through the information and synthesize it and, and try to get to some consensus around what we thought the future of, of the entirety of the program might look like. To be sure we're defining two-way programming, this is a program in which would include both students who are eligible, as our current programming would be because of Spanish heritage and Spanish spoken in the household, and then English-speaking students who have no Spanish heritage and are, and are monolingual at that time. And so a two-way program puts those students together for instruction, and all students receive instruction in both English and in Spanish at a ratio that we, that we set as a district with the goal of becoming essentially bilingual throughout the course of their educational career. One of the things we have to consider is that we have to keep those to, to make it an authentic program, those classrooms have to be balanced. It doesn't necessarily have to be 12 and 12 or 13 and 13, but it does need to be within a range so that it's really an authentic experience. If we have, you know, 20 monolingual English students and three native Spanish-speaking students, that's not going to be the immersion experience that we're looking for, for all of those students. So that is one of the things, if we consider a, a two-way program, that has to be part of our conversation. And as I mentioned before, really, this is typically going to be a kindergarten, sometimes first grade entry point, but really not beyond that for students of either heritage, just because of the nature of the programming. I could spend hours on the research, but I'm going to give you just a graphic and a couple of quotes. The, the research really is pretty conclusive that when you look at the programming options around dual language, that two-way dual language is, does have the most positive impact on students. So this is just sort of a, a graph that shows the actual English reading performance. This is looking at the, the EL population, so these would be our, our native Spanish-speaking students. That top red line is a two-way dual language program. The red, or the, excuse me, the yellow boxes would be a one-way dual language program, which is our current offering, and then everything else would be other models that are available. We're, you know, we're really only talking about those top two at this point, but there's a, that's a pretty clear research-backed representation visually. And then just a couple of quotes here that I'll, I'll leave on the slides, and I won't necessarily expand upon tonight in the interest of time, but just recognizing that there are, there are really, across three to four years of committee review of research and pedagogy and consultation with experts, you know, the, the consensus in the, in the educational community is that two-way language is the, the best and, and most, the opportunity that shows the most gains over time for students. So the survey we took, again, we had 200 responses, which is, is not intended to be a comprehensive sampling, but enough to give us an idea of dual language interest. And these would be families that have an incoming kindergartner in the next two years. So the first question is, how interested would you be? And you can see that well over half are very interested, which was the highest possibility, with another 26% saying possibly interested. But then we asked some qualifying questions to make sure people understood what this would look like, because we are still a community school district, and the reality is that the number of Spanish heritage speaking students that we would have eligible to balance would mean this isn't a program we would be offering likely at every school or even at very many of our schools at all. Likely would be one classroom, maybe two in some years. So the next question becomes, what if it wasn't your neighborhood school? And so you can see the very interested diminishes pretty quickly, but there certainly are still some possibly interested people if we are looking to, you know, what would that look like? And that speaks to the value of neighborhood schools in our community. The truth is, the same reality exists for our students in the one-way program now. Most of, many of those students are transported from another attendance area to El Sierra or to Kingsley or even to O'Neil to receive that instruction. And so it's, it's a question we've always asked families about that. We also said, what if it was a fee-based program, which is something we've talked about as, you know, the possibility when we think about offsetting future cost of staff and things like that, could the English, monolingual English families pay a nominal fee to be part of the program as a consideration? So again, that, that bring, that, that interest question still is around 50, 60%. And then the other thing to recognize is that when you enter a program like this, it really is very likely that you will be committing to being in that same classroom, or maybe two classrooms, for your educational career in District 58 for the most part, at least through the elementary school. Because as we said, students really can't come in and out of the program. And so that grouping of students, whereas even in our smaller elementary schools, you often have at least one section where you'll have different peers over the course of several years in your homeroom, that likely wouldn't be the case in a program like this. But even with all of that, there remains enough interest, when especially when we think about the number of students we're truly talking about that we would have capacity for in the beginning of a program, that it is something that we feel is worth pursuing, both for the benefit of our, of our EL population, but also for the potential benefit to the students who would be able to join that program. So really, we'd like to, one of the things we're looking toward tonight is to continue to take steps to develop the beginning of a two-way program, which would be for kindergarten students, incoming kindergarten students, next school year. So what do we have to do to make that happen? We have to identify a location, which really is most likely El Sierra. That's, we're pretty confident in that. We've got to develop a lot of communication. We have to determine how we're going to find those monolingual students, monolingual English students eligible for the program. So will it be first offered to students at El Sierra? Will it be immediately district-wide lottery? How will we approach that? We need to kind of finalize what the model is going to look like. There's a couple of different ways we can provide that two-way instruction, and so that's a conversation that needs to happen. I mentioned the fee-based piece. The other thing we always think about is what's the impact going to be on staffing? And so that, you know, some of the things in the first several bullets have to do with the last two. There's a possibility that this wouldn't have a significant impact on FTE for next year, but the reality is that if we begin this new program over the course of the next several years, as we continue to add one-way program, or excuse me, two-way programs at each grade level, there will be a gradual increase over the course of several years, and there will be increased staff. And we've been having those conversations as an administrative team, you know, prior to this coming before the board. So this list of things is what we would be working through in the next couple of weeks if the board indicates that we're kind of greenlit to continue exploring that. The other reality, and the other part of the committee work that I want to be sure to honor, is that if we begin a two-way program next year for kindergarten, we still have eight years of a one-way program to nurture. And so that's one of the pieces that we need to make sure we continue to look at. We need to think about the structures that are there. We need to make sure that, as I mentioned earlier, those additional bilingual supports, as we see student needs that are best met through bilingual staff, we need to make sure that we are seeking out and retaining bilingual staff. The other thing we've talked about, you know, there's this structure and that structure, and when you look back to that chart, we have 10 students in one grade level and four students in another grade level. And so the configuration that works for one cohort of students may not work for the next cohort. And so part of the conversation we want to have is really taking a look at best meeting the needs of students and thinking about what those different instructional models could be and ensuring, obviously, that we're compliant with everything around the requirements. So from here, after hearing from you tonight, we would also be incorporating feedback from the B-PAC members. They'll be either watching tonight or able to watch this conversation later, and then I have a meeting scheduled with them next week, so that before we took any action as a board, we would have feedback from that family group as well. The other thing that, you know, in recognition of the fact that none of us have ever built a program like this, we do want to identify a consultant who's got some expertise in dual-language and has built programs and developed programs to work with us over the next several months. We did have someone identified, and unfortunately, due to their personal circumstance, we're kind of back to the, not quite the drawing board, but we're a step back on that. So that's a next step to make sure that we have someone to just continue to bounce ideas off of and make sure that we are headed down the right paths. Obviously, communication details and all of those things, and then continue dialogue, like I said, around the structure of the current program. This one does have some time sensitivity in that we're going to begin kindergarten enrollment later this month in many places. I'm not going to suggest that we're going to be ready to announce every detail about the dual-language kindergarten two-way program by the first kindergarten roundup, which I think is like three days after the board meeting in March or even before in some schools. But we would want to be able to start to signal the availability and the kind of watch for more details to come as we go forward. So that is the update on dual-language. I would welcome questions or indication of support or further information needed, particularly around the two-way piece, which really that would be the only potential board action item later, or next month. The rest of it is administrative structuring and work with the team and the committee and things like that. But the initiation of a new program, we would want to make a formal motion for.
So I'm really into this subject, actually. When I was moving from way up north in Elgonquin to somewhere else, I looked at what districts, public school districts have dual-language and immersion programs. And almost moved to Schaumburg because they have one of the most robust programs that I've seen around in our area. I think having more information around this would be really, really helpful, especially the addition of FTEs and being cognizant of our financial responsibilities and understanding what that would look like. But I will say that there are definitely people out there that look for this kind of thing when they're moving into a community also. So I could see this as a big benefit over time for our district if we go this route. But more information for sure.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. Just going back to, you showed the slide where it showed the numbers of students over time in the program and from grade level to grade level since it began. Do you have any insight into what, like, it seems like across the board, as students get older into the upper grades, the numbers decrease almost consistently. Do you have any insight into why that is? Like, why are our students, are they moving away? Are they just opting out? Any information about that?
So right now, we, the anecdotal information is primarily moving away, primarily that, you know, that is a piece of it. You know, there also is, and this was backed by all four of the consultants we met with as a committee, you know, often by, as you get into the upper grades, you begin to become concerned that perhaps your child, and this can happen in two-way programs too, is not getting the other full experience. And so that can indicate some things. We have a survey that is going out to those families who have, you know, as best we can still reach out to them if they have moved away, to get just that sort of, you know, we haven't done exit surveys in that sense. It's something that we will do going forward to try to gather that information. So I don't have a definitive answer for you. I can tell you that as we look back over many, though, there certainly are a number of families who have moved out of district, and so that does account for a good percentage of the drop.
Okay. And then another question I had is, if we do decide to go to a two-way program, because this year's kindergarteners are not, because the current program is not operating for them at this time, could we potentially consider starting with a two-way program with next year's first graders because that hasn't really begun? I don't know, but that's something we could consider.
Sure. It is something we talked about at the committee meeting just this last Thursday. And where we landed, in a sense, was this year's, next year's first grade would be a unique group, however we do it, whether we bring them into a one-way program or whether we started a two-way program. You know, one of the strengths of beginning with one year is you've got a really concentrated effort on all of the new things that you're doing, and the uniqueness of our kindergarten instruction with kindergarten structure, excuse me, with Okeechobee and things like that, gives us some interesting flexibilities within that. You know, the, so there's some idea of focusing on one grade level. A lot of what we heard from the consultants we talked to is it really does take a couple of years to build this up. We do have a teacher right now who has taught dual-language two-way kindergarten in another district, and by her own words, it was with far less resources than we currently have in District 58. So not that you build a program around a person, but there is a level of confidence when you have someone with that experience to launch the program, even though that person wasn't involved in developing it, they had taught through it. So our current thinking was to invite all of the EL-eligible students, just as we would have in kindergarten, to join the dual-language program in first grade. The other thing that we considered, and it's, again, anecdotal, as a family, once you've started in a school, how likely is it that you're going to uproot after kindergarten to join that two-way program? Some may, you know, not exactly certain, but our, really, it has to do with kind of keeping the focus as narrow as we can in that first year to make sure that we're focusing our efforts on a successful first year of implementation. We definitely do want to offer the opportunity to be part of that one-way program, though, to any of the current kindergarten students who would have been eligible this year.
And then I'm completely supportive of exploring and moving forward with a two-way program. I think it's amazing, like Melissa said, I think this is something that a lot of people would really be interested in, and I think offering this as an opportunity for our students, both Spanish-speaking students, you know, native Spanish-speaking students, as well as monolingual English-speaking students, I think it's just an awesome opportunity. Just to throw this out there, I know this is like slightly premature because it's just something in discussion phase, but I'm concerned about the fee-based side of this, because I think we're saying, look at this wonderful opportunity, we're putting, we're giving our students, but we're going to limit it to a select group of students if we make this a fee-based program, depending on how extensive the fee is, obviously. But that's a concern to me. That would worry me if we set a significantly high cost to this. You're going to eliminate a lot of students who might really want to be part of the program, but they will not be able to because of cost, and so that's a concern to me, just going forward, so.
No, that's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking for tonight.
I guess I'd just piggyback on that saying, no matter what the fee is, I think the demand is going to outweigh the supply of seats in that program. So I guess my concern would be if you get a lot of people excited about this, then when we cap it at a very low number for next year, I mean, there's that PR issue there. So that's one thing I would be concerned about, how the administration's going to handle that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And even with the phrasing of the survey, that it was a very tentative, and we explained that too, even in the interest survey, that, you know, there will be a very limited number. Now, to member Ellis's point, once we get this program off the ground and begin to advertise it in different ways, it's possible that it could become a destination piece for some families. It's possible that more of our EL Spanish-speaking families may opt into it. You know, we do now have a number of students who don't opt in every year, even though they might be eligible. And so we could see the capacity grow over the next couple of years. It actually is another reason why starting with one year is a really, is a very manageable approach for us, to make sure that we are building something that we can then talk about much earlier than heading right into registration season. So, but I think the response to how we'll handle that is to be, is to be very, just very straightforward about it. Now, the other reality is that we don't necessarily learn who all of those eligible native Spanish-speaking students are until we get plenty of the way through the registration process. So as we go forward, the recognition will be, we may not know the number of seats that are available in those, in that classroom until we get much closer to the end of the school year. So it really is going to be, and you'll hear this kind of repeated through a number of things tonight, it's going to be a lot of communication. It's just going to have to be very clear and very straightforward, and that's the stuff we'd be developing.
I just looked up that school district I was talking about, and I mean, I think I remember, this was maybe 11 or 12 years ago I was looking, and I think they had maybe two schools, and it looks like now they have like 12 schools doing this in different languages. But I'd be curious to see how their growth happened. I may be misremembering, because that's a very long time ago for me, but, you know, how this grew and what it looked like for them, because they have a very, it looks like they have a very robust program there and one person running the entire program. So I'd be curious to see how this has worked elsewhere. I believe they had a similar, like a lottery program, because they're a very large district.
Yeah, and that really is, in talking to those four consultants we worked with, we had three unique, I mean, three of them work in school districts currently, another is a, you know, recently retired, and so we did get a lot of perspective on kind of what that looks like. And that's where some of that, like, establish it, advertise it, you know, get the word out and all of that was really a lot of the response to the growth. But again, at some point, the growth of that program is limited to the number of families and students that are in our community that have that heritage of Spanish spoken in our household or another language, if we've reached the capacity with another language that would warrant it.
I think we would certainly be looking at, and we already have started conversations with like your Glen Ellen 41s, your Naperville 203s, or Schaumburg. Of course, each one of those districts has a difference out of circumstances, but, you know, moving forward, one of the things that we have to answer the question for, and this is where we'll work closely with Todd, is if we're going to start something like this, we have to be able to sustain it. This isn't something that you can do for two or three years, and then you run into budget woes, and then all of a sudden it disappears, right? And this is also competing with some other high-level interest things that we have across the school district, like full-day kindergarten. I want to, you know, throw my full support behind dual-language. I think the research is clear that this is not only successful for the students who are acquiring English, but for those who are, you know, native English speakers, to be able to speak Spanish as well. I think it's a wonderful program. But we have to make sure that whatever we build is sustainable. And so you could very well be looking at a smaller model to start and then building on it as you go through, because the worst that can happen is that we've got to take this away or not be able to offer it. And, you know, it was just two short years ago where we had to make some strategic decisions, you know, prior to COVID-19 and ESAR funds and the TIF and all of that, where we did have to pull back a little bit, and we could already see, you know, the angst that that caused and, you know, legitimate concerns that were coming forward from our community members. So by no means is this a done deal in terms of format and structure, but my advice moving forward is start small and then build, which is precisely what those other districts have done.
You actually brought up a couple of the concerns or thoughts that I had, and part of it is, yeah, I was sitting on the board here when we had to make some changes, and the anxiety and anger that some of that stirred up was difficult, to say the least. And so anything that we're doing, I'm trying to look at the long-term trajectory, and I'm also trying to look at that FTE count and the cost. Sitting on the FAC, that's one of the things we're constantly analyzing, and one of the things that we, as a board, have been talking about is really getting a better idea of projecting out our FTEs. While I appreciate Member Hannis's comment around concerns around the fee, I sort of have some concerns the other way, that in, how do we take this and prioritize these FTEs over making sure that we have a full-day kindergarten program, that I think we've been asked for for a long time, that I think we have a lot of families that really, you know, need that start to their career? And so, and if this is something that was in high demand and wasn't a lottery, that is something we could always take away later. I think it's harder to add in a fee later once people are already in the program. Is that something that we start out here? If we're going to start out small, that we look at it there and try to eliminate potentially Okeechobee first and get that into a actual traditional, a full-day kindergarten program until we get a better understanding? The other piece, though, when we were talking about maintaining this, is it's, that trajectory is concerning if maybe we have higher turnover of our native Spanish-speaking students. And one of the things you talked about was really balancing that class. So if we start out with 12 and 10 or something along those lines, but our native speakers are going down, that all of a sudden changes the dynamic of the room. How have other districts dealt with that? And, you know, would we try to balance it more Spanish-speaking to English-speaking native to compensate that for that down the road or what?
So actually, there are, I mean, there are examples of situations like ours where some students move away that are native Spanish-speaking. There are other examples in other school districts where, to Member Hannis's point, as we get to the upper grades, some of the native English-speaking families become concerned that they may want to move out of the program for any number of reasons. And so the conversations we've had with all the other districts have gone in both directions, that the numbers can decrease over time. You know, one teacher referenced beginning with 30 kindergarteners, which I know is not something that we would typically do, and I'm not suggesting that we even would consider 30 kindergarteners. However, the thinking behind it is, you know you're not going to see an increase over time, but you know you are likely to see some decrease over time. So it's a combination of balancing, but also thinking about, would we consider starting with a slightly higher class size than we might typically, knowing that it's a specialized program, that we'll never see an increase and is statistically likely to see a decrease? So that's another way to approach that. That's a couple of steps down the line. In terms of the FTE projections, that's something I can certainly have back to us in a couple of weeks to kind of get a look at. What's nice is it's a gradual increase. There's never going to be a moment of, you know, three new FTE in one year, but it is an increase over time, and we can project that out compared to what we have now staffing-wise and what it would take to get to an eight-years-from-now fully-staffed two-way program.
And that is an important number, because while it is stepped over time, this board of seven people would be literally committing future boards and future administrations to this incremental growth. And it's something that I think, with all of the other aspects that we've been taking into account with our costs and all of our concerns and everything else that we've been doing, I think it's really important that we have a good understanding of the trajectory of the cost, because obviously we've got a lot of other concerns that we've been talking about, FTE need based on learning loss that happened from when we were in a pandemic, right? So as we step out of that pandemic, how many things, how many years are we going to be trying to staff up to play catch-up on some of the kids that were impacted by that? What are our additional social, emotional needs coming out of that that we've been talking about, potential need for some FTE there? I don't see any, we've kind of talked about this a little bit before, and I don't think I saw a single face not interested in having a true two-way program like this. I just, from a financial perspective, I want to make sure that we just don't bite off something that we can't chew, but I think it's an exciting thing to see.
I think that's another thing as we look at it down the road, and I'm not suggesting this is the model that we land on, but one way to control FTE, it doesn't open it up to the whole district, but you could start in a one-attendance center or two-attendance centers and then build it from there. So once, let's say you have a two-section school, one section is always dual-language, the other one is, you know, just a general education classroom, and then you build it up. That's a way to control FTE. The problem with that model is it doesn't open it up to the entire district. So when you open it up to the entire district, if you have two kids win the lottery from Pierce and two kids win it from Lester and two kids, you're not necessarily helping reduce the class sizes over there, which would then offset the addition of a new section at the other school. And so there's many different ways to look at it, but, you know, we will certainly examine all different ways, and I think the important thing is that we do move forward with this, how do we build something that is sustainable, that makes sense, and doesn't severely limit options for the kids in the program, but also our other students throughout the district?
Good comments, your question?
All right, thank you. The next thing we're going to talk about this evening is the middle school schedule and a few adjustments we're looking at for next year. So we've had a middle school scheduling committee that's been meeting since March of 2019, actually 2018 that should be, and there's a number of desires that come around when we talk about what could we do with the middle school schedule. When you look at all kinds of middle schools around us, there are a myriad of different ways to construct a schedule, and that leads to student opportunities in a number of ways. So back in February of 2020, we presented an option to the middle school staff that was really kind of a complete overhaul. We were looking at a completely different way to structure that might provide a myriad of different student opportunities, and the staff had enough questions that it was like, And the staff had enough questions that it was like, okay, well, that's maybe that's not the model. Maybe we need to come back to the the drawing board. And and like many other things, which is why these evenings are so heavy with work that was paused, then we paused that work because we weren't gonna change a middle school schedule in the middle of the pandemic. So we came back together this fall to begin looking more closely at the work. And so the recognition is there's a lot of things people would like to see around a middle school schedule. And we're also aware that one of the the potential items on the potential referendum could see a major shift in our middle schools in a few years with six four years joining. If that were to happen, obviously, that would have a significant impact on future scheduling. And so we've got the balance for like, there are certain things that we would really like to see happen soon. But then how much significant change do we want to undergo until we know what the future significant change may or may not be? And so as we look to next year, we're not looking at a massive overhaul of the schedule. We're looking at a couple of pieces that will allow for some student opportunities and some additional student supports that we have really been expressed expressed as strong desires. They'd be consistent district wide and would allow us for some opportunities in terms of class structure and things like that that we just haven't had. And so again, we want to look to minimize the impact of change while meeting some of those goals, knowing that we could have some future significant change. So Matt Dervala has been a part of the middle school scheduling committee since it began. He's gonna come up and talk a little bit about some of those proposed changes for next year.
Hi, everyone. I suppose the most important thing to know going into this conversation is additional support at the middle school has traditionally come at the expense of something else. We only have an eight period day that is scheduled. And in order to try and do extra things, we have to take something else away. So that's kind of where the impetus for these ideas came from. The first one is a student advisory period. And this would be a fifteen minute period at the beginning of every day. It's very common to the middle school concept to have some type of an advisory period in the student day. And we chose the morning for a number of different reasons. The first thing is executive functioning, which is something that has become very important at the middle school level. It's a skill that must be taught to kids. You don't just learn how to be organized and how to schedule yourself. You have to be taught how to do that. And for the last five or six years at O'Neill, we've had an executive functioning program that we've used. It involves a binder system and things like that. Next year, we're going to to open that up to both middle schools. And a key component of that is a structured system to the week. And in our current schedule, every day during home base, the students do a particular piece of executive functioning, whether it's locker clean outs, whether it's checking your grades, whether it's making sure your binder is organized, different pieces like that. And there's a real benefit to being able to do that in the morning versus in the middle of the day. We can kind of get everybody off on the right foot at the start of the day. So it makes a lot of sense to have this advisory period in the morning. The other thing it lets us do is get our announcements, get our, okay, I don't have a charger for my Chromebook. I I need this. I forgot this. We can take care of a lot of those things in that period without impacting that instructional time for kids. And then the other piece of it is by having this period where all the kids start with home base in the morning, an eventual goal for us would be to move more towards that idea of families that you see at the elementary level, where we are able to do a number of pieces related to social emotional things and things like that with these groups. The biggest piece of it also is it allows us to keep that Monday schedule that we've developed. As you know, at the middle school level now, we start every Monday in home base. And we do our SEL activity for the week every Monday at the start of the week. Now granted, on Mondays, this this advisory period will be thirty minutes long instead of fifteen. And that's by the design of the SEL lesson, so we have enough time. But it builds a routine in that now we are starting every day in this advisory period or in this home base. So it's a real positive piece. The next thing is the student support period. So when I show the the schedule here in just a second, the other component that we have at the middle school level is the lunch periods. And and students, in order to have enough time for kids to eat, and because we need to have four lunch periods due to numbers, we have to have a way to offset that. So there is a a period opposite lunch. During lunch, kids eat for half of the period, and they currently have home base for the other half of that period. Home base is still going to be there, and it's still going to function primarily as a study hall for kids. One of the biggest issues that we have right now, we do all of our executive functioning. We do a lot of the things that we need to do during home base during that time. And if you're a student that participates in a social group or you're a student that has an intervention during your home base time, you're not in your home base to have those executive functioning pieces. That focuses back to you miss something. The other thing is many of our students who receive some type of an intervention have that at the expense of some other class. I receive a math intervention or a reading intervention, and that's in place of me being able to participate in exploratories or me being able to participate in social studies, things like that. So by having this support period opposite lunch, we're really hopeful that many of those kids will get to have that exploratory period back in their day, which is really important. Many times, our kids that struggle the most don't get to have those exploratory classes, which can be really important for kids. And so we're really, really hopeful that this will happen. The biggest piece, it won't be at the expense of something else. We're purposely starting this very small. We want to make sure that we do this right. So the majority of kids will continue to have a structured study hall during that time opposite lunch. For other kids that need intervention, they're gonna be able to get that intervention without sacrificing some other thing. Our ultimate goal moving forward is that we're able to put in maybe some enrichment activities for kids. Or there are there are different advanced opportunities we can do for kids at the other end of the spectrum. But we're purposely starting very small next year with math and reading interventions to make sure we get this time right and make it effective for our kids. And then finally, a quick look at how the schedule goes. So again, this is what you're seeing up here. This is the Tuesday through Friday schedule. The Monday schedule is not going to change from what it currently is now. Students will go to that advisory period during that first fifteen minutes. Class periods are forty three minutes long. You'll notice that the lunch periods are a little bit longer. They're forty eight just because we need to have that time for lunch built into it. So a couple of positives with this is we are able to get the addition of this advisory period, which is gonna solve a lot of issues for us at the middle school level. And we're able to do it without changing the length of the school day. We're able to do it without impass impacting our busing structure, which we know is is very hard to mess with. And we're able to do it without affecting that Monday schedule. This does not impact early bird because early bird still runs from seven forty five to eight twenty five. We are taking this fifteen minutes of advisory out of the one through eight period of the day. So it does push. Currently, our our content classes are forty seven minutes, and you can see next year they go to forty three. But I really think that offset with the ability to have this advisory time and intervention is positive on both sides.
I would just echo that last point. You know, sometimes we look at, well, there is there's a there is a very slight reduction of instructional time in this shift. But it's not a reduction of instructional time. That instructional time is happening during the student advisory period for all students. And if we can increase our capacity for students to be organized and ready when they walk into a classroom, that first couple of minutes of instructional time that is currently spent on some of those executive functioning skills in individual classrooms will simply be returned from another spot. So I'll pause there and ask if there are any questions of the board around.
Did we do any benchmarking on this versus other districts and kind of how they?
So the, yeah, the the middle school scheduling committee looked at at twenty five other middle school schedules. We actually, there's a consortium of middle school principals that Matt Dervala had been a part of. And so we've looked at, we've looked at a ton. And there are a number of differences. Candidly, one of the biggest differences is we devote two full class periods to reading and language arts in our middle school schedule, and almost no one else does that. There certainly are places where there you'll see more time for this, that, or the other. But that structure, and again, that gets into, we that we initially were looking at some major changes that could have affected a lot of things. So this in terms of really looking to maintain the vast majority of our structure, that that was sort of one of the driving decisions of how we arrived at this.
I have a couple of questions. Um, for the, how long are class periods now?
Forty six or forty seven minutes.
So three or four minute delta difference, they'll be shorter. In terms of having the home base be the time, so the kids that are pulled out, I I I'm not familiar with that. So if if you have interventions in math or reading, how long is your interv? Is it commensurate with your home base or your student advisory period of twenty two minutes? Or like, because you said that it's at the expense of missing social studies or science, which is a forty three minute period. So are they getting less intervention time?
So that's a good preview question in math in particular for the next conversation we're gonna have. But the short answer is, you know, it's it's a different kind of structure. What we, you know, we we don't necessarily have that targeted intervention structure that we see in the elementary buildings where you're looking at twenty or thirty minutes a day of of intervention or small group targeted support. The structures we have at the middle school typically are full classes of support. So on the one hand, yes, when we're pulling kids out for some of that tier three and even high low tier two level support, they are typically missing a class, so they're seeing forty minutes there. The reality is that a lot of those interventions aren't really designed to be forty seven minutes long on a daily basis. Like, it's just a, it's difficult to right size the model with this with the structural constraints. And that's why this is gonna allow us to do a little more right sizing, we believe, of what that.
I didn't even know that this was something that was that there was a committee or or I don't remember it because of the last two years. Was this really because of intervent? Like, what what's the reasoning for the 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 scheduled change? Like, you you've written some things down here, but I'm just curious, like, was there one compelling thing that said we gotta switch this up?
When we when we first brought the group together, there were certainly, you know, everyone that comes into a committee is gonna have things that they personally would like to see in a schedule. One of the things that really, though, as Matt mentioned, was agreed upon was there are a lot of students who, because of our structure, if they need additional support, they are immediately removed from one of the areas where they might find success if they're struggling academically. So that was something that that was a shared perspective. If we can find a way to reduce the need to remove a class from student schedules, it won't change that for every single student, but it will change it for many. That that's in that policy. The other idea of some sort of an actual advisory type period also had a lot of traction. Now, some people would say they want it at the end of the day, and some people would want it structured differently. But but a lot of people said, you know, no, I see wisdom behind doing it in the morning, gathering together, getting everybody. And as Matt said, it starts to build that that daily family feel where there's not an academic pressure or kids aren't getting pulled out of that for other other supports or checking in with teachers or any of those kinds of things. It really, those were two of the initial things that really did rise to the top in the committee's initial conversations.
So so in terms of the student advisory period, for somebody that doesn't have an intervention or whatever, it's is the schedule really no, like, home base is still the same for them? So it really doesn't change anything for them, other than the fact that the first fifteen minutes is looks different?
I think on August whatever it's next year, that's probably true as we begin the school year. As Matt said, the the first area of focus is getting together some intervention supports in math and reading, potentially some, you know, even some SEL type groups during that time. I think our our vision for this, though, once we get into implementation and start moving forward, is that there's a myriad of opportunities during that time. A teacher, you know, a a teacher could pull a, you know, a a math skill enrichment group that met that met every Tuesday during four B or things like that. There are all kinds of possibilities, both on the support end and on the extension end of it. I think we want to be careful that we don't get too far ahead of of outlining those. That's part of the work of collaboratively developing this time. But again, it's starting with the the need that was driven, but also recognizing the number of opportunities. And really, that home base time, too, you know, Matt used the the phrase structured study halls. So it could be that it's a study period, but it could also be that some students are identified who really do benefit from more of a check in type structure. And so they may be in a room where we're really going through, okay, we're gonna spend ten minutes talking about what happened in your second period class and really walking through some of those things. So kind of a, not necessarily an intervention level of support, but another layer of that executive functioning and organizational support.
Is there room in this, um, moving forward to grow that? It's my experience that a thirteen year old boy doesn't want to go to office hours before or after school, that the home base period might be a situation where like, if you compare it to like the high school that has now we have, they have this large resource time that you have lunch or you could roam the commons or whatever. I know it's a high school district. But there's also, you can go see the math teacher. There's like a math, you know, there's a, is there room in that? Or is there, is that maybe something down the line that would be something that could be worked into this? So that, so even if you don't, meaning like, even if you don't have intervention, like, you you don't need intervention, but you just really need to help on chapter three of math, that there would be an availability for you to have that built into that?
Yeah, those are absolutely things we've talked. And even as we've talked about this initially with some of the middle school staff, you know, a a science teacher brought up, you know, well, could I could I pull a group of kids at a certain time for this if it worked? And the answer is yes, it's all gonna hinge on the actual scheduling. But that's exactly, those are exactly the kinds of things we'd like to see develop over time with that student support period. So it really becomes a support period for all students over time.
But but not to be negative, not to be really, but like, as far as with the teacher's responsibilities of a home base, they're also responsible for keeping order in the home base. So it's not like, it's not like before after school where you have a an office hour where you're maybe just working one on one with somebody. They also have responsibilities to the other twenty kids that are in the home base or whatever. Does that, does that cause a logistical or like a planning issue?
So those are, that that's a great example of the the work that is ahead. You know, I mean, we're we're moving into, like Matt said, some of the things we will have structured and focused at the beginnings. Others will evolve over time to see what it looks like. There's a, there's an opportunity for a lot of fluidity in here, too, where if if there are three teachers that have a student support period during four A, and one says, hey, I, you know, if you guys are just having a a straight and structured study hall today, I would like to pull this group of kids and work specifically with them. You couldn't, I mean, I don't want it to start to sound like we're gonna make daily adjustments, but there are school districts where you get a pass by third period that tells you which support period to go to fifth period. We're not talking about that kind of fluidity, but there are certainly different ways to address some of those things over time. Again, not to not to over promise. I think those are the things that will evolve over the course of the next school year.
Is this something like, just like with professional development Mondays, like, if if this were to be implemented for the fall or whatever, that it would be evaluated to see if it's, so it's not a set and forget it, that we would be able to look and say, you know, actually, this didn't really nut out the ROI we were hoping for and go back to the regular way?
Absolutely. I think that's, and that's one thing that is stated on some of these things in the the slide deck tonight, but should be assumed for all of them. Any any change we make going into next school year is gonna need time for reflection and evaluation. And I anticipate about this time next year, we would be having a conversation around, okay, what has it looked like? And what kind of feedback have we gathered from staff and students? And are we continuing? Are we adjusting? Or are we completely revised?
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, just to jump in on some of the questions you had. In terms of a teacher, you know, being a former middle school teacher, it wasn't uncommon where a student would come and get help from me during that home base time, where I still had the rest of my home base there or my homeroom there. And I think our teachers are are very capable of of handling that situation.
But what, but is that, was that that you requested or the kid said?
Sometimes it was both. Sometimes students would say, you know, Mr. Russell, can I come see you during home base? Or I would say to the student, you need to come and see me during home base because you were absent. Or perhaps, you know, I need you to redo this assignment. One of the other things that I I can't underscore enough is that as I've, you know, come back to the district, the middle school concept, we've gotten further and further away from that I think this schedule that that's being proposed by our middle school staff, that they've really had a chance to look at, gets us back closer in the direction of middle schools. And there's a reason why our district shifted to middle schools a a long time ago versus just a junior high, you know? And just plain layman's terms, a a junior high is a mini high school. You know, you're on your own and you go for it. Here at the middle school, that advisory is a core piece of the middle school process, where we are working with kids on a daily basis about social, emotional learning, common expectations. That's one of the things we've heard a lot from our staff about kids coming back from the pandemic. How do we reinforce common expectations? Advisory period is a great opportunity to do that. But also, I don't think it's any secret for the board or even our community, our middle school students across the board are really struggling socially and emotionally as they come back. We've dealt with more issues and concerns this year with our middle schoolers than I think we ever have, you know, in all the years combined, just because it's been such a a challenging year. I think this advisory is is a great step towards true middle school. And I can tell you, being the the dad of a special needs student at the middle school, I cannot tell you how heartbreaking it is to sit at the IEP meeting and say, so he can't have art, the one thing that he absolutely loves to do, because he's so far below in reading that he's got to take an extra reading class. And and there are countless parents that have to do that across the board. And I'm not suggesting that won't ever happen in this model. But for the ability to have a conversation with parents, say, no, you know what? That is the one area where your student thrives. We're gonna let them do that. And instead, we're gonna take this period across home base and really give it intense intervention. I think that is is definitely worth exploring and worth trying because that's what the whole middle school concept is about. It it's about exploring. It's about getting your feet wet in these different things and and really enjoying yourself. And and some of our kids who struggle academically thrive in those other settings.
That's why they go to school.
Yeah, and we take that away from them in this model. And that's, you know, I understand why we do that. I I support that sometimes. But if we could have both, and so that's what I really appreciated about what Matt shared and what Justin shared. I know Matt has sat across the table from countless families and had to share that news with them. And it it's hard. And it ends up having a negative impact on the kids. And so I think this is a really good thing to, you know, try, especially because our staff had such a a strong input. And I want to commend Justin for going back and talking to our middle school teams over and over again about this. It's not perfect, but I think it gets us closer to a true middle school concept, which we embrace in Downers Grove. And I think it gives our kids more opportunities. But Tracy, exactly what you said in terms of the return on investment. If this isn't working, we have to admit it, and we have to go back or do something different. And I think that's very important. I know Justin's gonna talk about, you know, the double math block in a little bit. And that's an example of how we reevaluate things and maybe look at it differently. But I But I definitely support this. I think it is a, a very good idea, and I do think it's worth the investment.
Thank you. A couple of things just to piggyback up that. I totally agree with the, what you said, and Justin kind of alluded to it as well, about a huge benefit to this being kids being able to still have those exploratory classes. Because you're totally right, I think for so many of the kids who struggle academically, that is a, it's a chance where they can kind of release. They get to go there and they get to be creative, and they don't, they're not stressed anymore about it. I, I think that's huge, and that is such a benefit to this. I think it's hugely important. The other part, I think, is the executive functioning part of it. Just, I just remember when I taught middle school, so many kids who you could tell they were, they had so much potential, and they were so bright, and they were so smart, and what was getting in their way was that they couldn't stay organized. They couldn't find their papers, they couldn't keep their assignment notebook in order. You'd try to help them find, you'd go to their locker, and they'd open it, and it'd just be like, stuff falling everywhere. And that's what, that was what was in their way, not the, not their potential, not their academic potential. And so if we can address some of those needs and prepare them better, especially to go on to high school, and whatever else they're gonna do in their life, that's a huge skill that's worth four minutes from every class period.
Like, back to them by fire, when you go, when you go to the high school.
Yes, exactly.
So I, I totally agree.
So trying to get that, help them with those skills, like, like, like Matt said, that's, you have to be taught that. You don't just know how to do that, you have to learn it. So I think that's huge.
I agree with you. Work within that environment to continue to be organized, not just your parents telling you, organize your body, you know, it's somebody else kind of working. And then, and then the other benefit that this might have at the beginning of the day is that there's an opportunity where you don't see certain kids throughout the entire day, because they may be at a different academic level, or a different class schedule, right? That you've seen all your grade school career, and now they're all different levels, right? And so they barely see each other through the day. You might see one or two familiar faces in your student advisory period, and that might be comforting for some kids. Thank you for all your work on this, I think that's great.
I, I like everything I'm hearing, and I, and I, you talking about living the, the middle school model, that's, that's resonating with me. I guess my reservation is, on the heels of a conversation where we are talking about accountability against strategic indicators, I don't, it has to be stated that we're, we're cutting about eight or nine percent from each of our academic courses each day. And if, if you just say, well, it's four minutes of each period over the course of a year, that's 12 hours of less time, less instruction for math. So I understand the, the logistics here. I understand that we have, we're, we're living with, within certain parameters. I think that, I understand why this is being presented to us, presented to us the way it is. I think that, however, the, the, at least something that should be explored, or considered, or, or looked to for the future was, I mean, we, we had to live within a certain number of minutes every day, and I understand that they're restricted by number, how, how many minutes we can. We do have some opportunity, I think, maybe in the next year or two, to have this conversation about, maybe we just need a length in the day. If we have, if we have, if we have to, if we're trying to get our academic outcomes to improve, and we also need to help students with executive functioning, and, and provide a lot of other opportunities for them, I think just the other, the conversation we just need to be having is, do we have enough minutes in the day, and what can we do to, to impact that?
No, and I think those are, are very fair points. When I look at this historically, this, this schedule isn't, you know, that far out of line with what we currently have, or, or have had historically. I think for me, time isn't the most important variable, it's the quality of instruction. I think that's all in, in, I, I think everybody agrees with that. The other piece, though, too, is if we're not explicitly teaching executive functioning, socio-emotional learning, excuse me, then that can be problematic in terms of getting in the way of the academic time that we have. I certainly recognize, though, when you take away time from core instruction, it has to be worth it, especially when we're talking about recovering from a pandemic and increasing test scores. To me, I think this is an investment in the socio-emotional side of things, and the executive functioning side of things, which I truly believe will benefit the academic side of things.
Sure, I mean, if one side's in flux, the other one's gonna be, you're gonna miss it. I just, I think, I think there are opportunities, I mean, I, I'm sure there's, there's a lot of, just, I'm not even seeing bus schedules, and, and collective bargaining agreements are, are some of the things that pop in my head, but I, I don't think it, I mean, Steve asked a question earlier about how do we compare against other districts? Like, what is the length of our day compared to other districts that we, that we are, that are in our neighborhood? Do we have, are we, are we in line with where everybody else is at the middle school level? Or do we, do we just need more time? And, and, and we do have some opportunities to be, in, in the, in the near future, to be having those conversations about whether that's another resource we need to procure for our students.
Yeah. No, I think that's fair, and I think the length of the time of the school day sometimes depends on what you're offering. So for instance, in a true middle school setting, teachers will have two planned periods. And so the day is gonna be longer, because one will be a team plan, and the other one will be a, a personal plan. So that's automatically gonna extend the day. So kids in that type of a setting would get an additional exploratory class. When I look at our school day, it is not what I would consider, you know, much shorter, much longer. I think it's right around what we would see our, our peer districts. Again, the difference being, if some of those districts in that true middle school model would have that extra planned period for teachers, that, that's one of the biggest differences.
Well, and I, I, yes, we did some of that research as well, and I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so I won't quote it, but I, we are pretty, length of day is pretty commensurate. I think the way the offerings are structured, as Kevin mentioned, is there's, there's a myriad of ways to look at it. And so, to, to the point of, as we review this next year, by, by this time next school year, we'll have some other information about the future of our middle schools. And so then that can start to inform a conversation about what are our long-term scheduling goals, and what might that look like, and, and what kind of changes could we anticipate as we move either toward an entirely different structure, or know that potentially that's not a direction we're going. And, and both of those have an impact then on what kind of long-term decisions we make around, like I said, the structure of how we put our day together.
I'll be curious from, a year from now, what, how it looks, because as someone that's been in the hallway at the middle school, and seeing kids forget things in their locker and whatever, maybe those minutes in the morning will actually set the, set, set it straight, and it'll cascade throughout the day. And so while it is three minutes shorter of a period, there's a lot less monkeying around with like, what, what they forgot, or left in their locker, or anything else like that. So you can get hit the ground running right when you start class. So we'll be curious when, when it's, after a year, what it looks like.
Probably especially first period, right? Like, there was a reference to who had chargers, and who brought their thing charged, and who has this.
Yeah.
What did I forget? And so my guess is that some of the minutes at the beginning of first period would become much more valuable than, than they have been maybe in the past. So I, you know, just like when we talked about adding that Monday in, and we really wanted, where we have the short day, and we really wanted to come back and say, is it actually reducing the amount of substitute teachers? Are, are we getting more in line? Is that a more valuable way to spend that time? I think, I think that's some of the stuff we'd like to hear a year from now, is how have we seen the time that we're spending with our students become more, are we getting value out of this day? Or is, is this one step on a rung of, of changes that are gonna come down the pike? I think we'll be interested to hear that.
All right. Last big, last big topic for tonight is some math updates, and I'm gonna move relatively quickly through some of the pieces that are a little more granular, in the hope that we can kind of get to just the pieces that I want to make sure the board is aware of. This is the last thing on tonight's agenda that really, the timing of it helps us with next steps. So just for familiarity's sake, this is our current middle school math course outline. So you can see that a student who is in sixth grade has several courses they could go into as a seventh grader, based on a set of eligibility criteria. That top boxes foundations, which is really what we call a core replacement, that's, that's acknowledging that the student is really going to only complete about half of seventh grade math during their seventh grade year. Common Core 7 double block is that instance where we're saying, so this is a student who's identified by past performance and, and math scores and teacher recommendation as needing additional support. The only way we've had to give that additional support up till now is that two periods of math, which immediately means the removal of another class period. Then there's Common Core 7 single block, which is just grade-level math. Math A is a course that has a sequence of compacting, so Math A plus Math B equals three years of math in two years, right? So that's seventh grade and most of eighth grade in, in seventh grade year, rest of eighth grade, and ninth grade math in your eighth grade year. And then if a student is already accelerated, they would go into accelerated seventh, which is eighth grade math, and accelerated eighth. What you'll notice is that both Math A and Math B, and then that accelerated path, have the exact same endpoints, and, and we'll get into that in just a second. So that's currently what it looks like. As we looked over this with math committee over the past few years, that's a lot of classes, first of all, at the, at a middle school level, when we think about how many different structures there are. We haven't looked back at the placement criteria, we've really just kind of rolled it over for several years. And that criteria is percentiles and teacher rating scales primarily. We haven't adjusted any of this since elementary acceleration began, and that's to say that it was, you know, we now have students who have been accelerated in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, who are matriculating through the middle school. But all of the structure above that line predates that, that experience. We also know now that we've got that student support period happening opposite lunch next year, which has an impact on our ability to provide support. I talked about the endpoint. The other thing that I'll talk about a little bit more in the elementary side is, we also don't have a defined path yet for double acceleration. So I'll come back to that in just a minute. So when we talk about Math A and Math B again, these courses were put in place long before, when, when the math sequence at the high school changed, and then forced to change in our sequence, but also before we were, we were accelerating at the elementary level like we do now. So the current criteria for Math A entrance is looking at students who are between the 62nd and 85th percentile, because right now, the 85th and above are typically already accelerated. And so as we reviewed that criteria, and one of the conversations we've had at math committee all around acceleration is, are we capturing the right population of students, right? We don't want to miss anyone who would be effectively and appropriately challenged by acceleration, but we also want to be careful that we are setting students up for success long-term, because, you know, that, the math is going to get quickly more challenging for them, and so we want to think about what that looks like. So that, you know, there are students who have been very successful in Math A and Math B, there are also students who have not found success in Math A and Math B, and so that's something we just do want to keep in mind. We also look at the new 6A scope and sequence with our new resource, and when you really look at that three-year curriculum, the majority, many of the concepts that are, that are introduced in sixth grade come back around in seventh grade, obviously a little more depth, but the content comes back. Whereas, the same isn't true for seventh grade content to eighth grade content, and also really not eighth to ninth. So then if we're thinking about trying to apply consistent acceleration criteria, the last point we want to have a big group of students make a jump would be over sixth grade, rather than over seventh or over eighth, systematically, just thinking about the content they would be seeing. So then, in order to make that happen, if we were looking to remove the Math A and Math B class, we also want to make sure that we find a time to reach students that would have been close to that criteria. And so what, what math committee has discussed is, where now we have to back it up a little bit, we'd be talking about current students then. If we want that last jump of a decent-sized group of kids to be over sixth grade, we'd have to make the decision and bring the criteria to that, that threshold that we want to consider in the end of fifth grade. And so what we're looking at is if those students had their three most recent math scores, math scores in math, at the 80th percentile or above, and a rating scale score on the teacher rating scale, that would mean they're accelerated. Let me just point out, all those rating scale numbers are in parentheses, because one of the things math committee is doing is revising that teacher rating scale. We've acknowledged that some of the items should be weighted a little more heavily than others, as we consider students for eligibility, so those numbers could change in the final criteria. And then, if the three most recent math scores are at the 75th percentile or above, and the, the score on the teacher rating scale meets, then we would work for some additional assessment information, kind of looking at those kids that might be on the bubble of eligibility, similar to the current criteria for math. What's going to happen then in our system is, this is going to mean a larger number of students who are accelerated as sixth graders, because we're bringing the threshold for acceleration down at that point, rather than in Math A. And so this year, as you know, all of our accelerated sixth graders travel to one of the middle schools for their instruction in seventh grade math. Logistically, we may not have a one-size-fits-all solution in coming years. It may be that some students travel to the middle schools, it may be that if we have a school where there are 25 students who are accelerated, it may not make sense to put 25 students on a bus, since that's a class, and we might look at allocating resources a little bit differently in a particular building to make that happen, which is part of the reason we want to look at evaluating the, the current fifth graders actually a little earlier, rather than waiting for spring math for everybody, getting some of that information around spring break, so we can start to move forward with some of those instructional systems. You'll see on a few slides just some reference points. So for example, as we're talking about, you know, what is the 75th percentile? Well, if my RIT score that puts me at the 75th percentile in fifth grade, my actual score on the assessment, that same number means I'm actually at the 66th percentile in sixth grade. So that score is showing readiness for next-grade level content, and that I, that I likely would be ready for those skills and be, to be successful. Not necessarily top of the class. Acceleration is not designed to keep kids in the upper percentage of their accelerated math class, it's designed to make sure that we're appropriately challenging them with the content that the information we have says that they're ready for. In double block, again, we talked about this, it's two periods of math during the, the schedule, which means the removal of a course, and we really haven't had an option until now to do that. But really, we're now looking at the removal of double block as an option in place of Common Core math at their grade level, plus intervention during the student support period. And, you know, when we talk about why do we make decisions like this, the truth is that as we, as we look back over double block growth in the past several years, we're not necessarily seeing the level of growth we'd hope for. If you're giving a student twice as much math, not, not achievement, but from, from their starting point, you would hope they would be growing more than a student that had one times as much math. And we're, we're just, that isn't what we're seeing. And so one way to look at it is looking at their conditional growth percentile. And so comparing the double block versus Common Core Math 7. When you look at that first couple of numbers in winter 1718, we did see some seventh-grade growth that was a little bit higher, which, which is encouraging, but when we look across as an aggregate, we're really just not seeing it. The growth isn't even necessarily meeting the grade-level math class when they're receiving twice as much math, much less exceeding it. So really, it's the combination of having an alternative to provide intervention and additional support in math, and recognizing that this class, despite strong instruction and the best efforts of our teachers, may just not be meeting the needs of this student population. So then, again, thinking about the middle school system, obviously, we've talked about this, we need to reflect on changes and see what, what it looks like. We need to communicate well, and also, one of the things that we'll talk about with, you know, with acceleration decisions, you know, we're making a decision where we can't always see the future, and it's very difficult to have a deceleration conversation later for a student, because you don't, that, that can be a very challenging conversation. However, there are gonna be times when six or eight weeks into a different placement, we may have, have set a student up to struggle more than we believe they should. I think appropriate struggle and, and challenge is, is part of education, but, but there is a disproportionate struggle sometimes. And so we just need to recognize that it's not gonna be the case for 98% of our students, but occasionally, there may be a placement decision that was premature, and it may not be time to accelerate that student. So we want to be able to say by the end of first trimester, we'll review those decisions and make sure that we're on the right track. We also want to look at some summer preparation. We, we'll talk a little bit about what the elementary piece looks like, but when we talk about jumping over sixth grade math or at that higher level, when we first introduced Math A and Math B several years ago, we had also introduced summer school in-person courses that were designed as preparation for those math classes. And so we would be looking at the potential of a summer school offering, it would be two, you know, two or three weeks of exposure to some of the content that would be skipped over in preparation for that next class. And obviously, then, if we move in this direction for next year, we would need to have one more year of Math B for the students who are currently in Math A to finish that sequence. So then, the future of middle school courses would look something like this. We'd have, you know, fewer arrows and fewer boxes across the board, and then we'd kind of have the addition of that bottom row, which is a double accelerated track. Today, there are six students in that double accelerated track that are sixth graders right now, who are taking currently eighth grade math. And the reality is that those students are, and other double accelerated students like them, are the result of advocacy at some point in our system, whether it was a teacher or a parent or a combination. What we haven't had is a defined set of criteria to look at all students for double acceleration. And that's another thing that we want to make sure that we are addressing, so that it doesn't require advocacy. It requires a set of, meeting a set of criteria to be considered for double acceleration. So while the number of students in that bottom track are very small right now, we would expect, as we start to apply this criteria in the next couple of years, that will grow, where we will be offering Math II more regularly, which is sophomore-year math. Again, not for all students, but for the percentage of our population that's truly ready for that. If we go back a decade, when the sequence was algebra as a ninth grader, geometry as a 10th grader, we offer geometry every year in both of our middle schools. That's something we've done in the past, and we want to define that path going forward. The elementary level, we wanted to review the criteria for kind of acceleration beginning in third grade, which is when we begin to look at all students for acceleration, considering, obviously, the elementary impact on middle school. I talked about developing a procedure for double acceleration, and also recognizing our obligations under the Accelerated Placement Act. We aren't obligated to look at all students beginning in kindergarten or first grade and consider them for acceleration, but we do need to have a procedure in place for a request that comes in for earlier acceleration and what that criteria would look like. And that's something we won't talk about specifically tonight, but it is something we're working on building out this spring. If you think about our policy for early admission to kindergarten and early admission to first grade, those kinds of policies fall under the idea of the Accelerated Placement Act. We need to have something that spells out what that could look like for students whose families or teachers might request acceleration earlier than when we apply that criteria to all students as a district. Our current acceleration criteria for all elementary students is scoring above the 85th percentile at least the last three data points, that teacher rating scale, principal approval, and then we do ask parents to approve the placement of their student, as well as committing to some summer exploration of the content that they would be skipping over. It's most typically the third grade content, because the majority of students who are accelerated in a given year are currently second graders. Looking forward, as we think about the conversation of when do we accelerate, and how do we make sure that we're accelerating the right students at the right time, part of Math Committee's dialogue was, beginning at the end of second grade, we might want to tighten the threshold or raise the threshold a little bit, knowing that there will be several additional opportunities as they move through our system. And so we initially said, well, let's just set it at the 90th percentile. And then teachers on the Math Committee started looking at some of their actual students and said, well, wait a minute, this student's at the 88th percentile and they're thriving. So we applied that same idea of, we're going to have a threshold, and then sort of the next 5% would be sort of that bubble, where we would then ask for an additional assessment to be completed. So that's what the criteria would look like for second-grade students for single-grade acceleration. The committee was pretty adamant that we don't want to begin the single-grade, double acceleration, excuse me, until the end of third grade. And the reason for that is that the idea of a student skipping over two full years of math content would not typically be something we would think would be advisable or in the child's best interest, because now you just really are jumping pretty far in the system. So we do want to begin that in third grade, so at the end of, or going into fourth grade. So at the end of third grade, then, we would evaluate students who would likely have already been accelerated, and we would want to see their three most recent map scores actually meet the 85th percentile in fourth grade. So their current score, putting them at the 80th percentile in the grade, 85th percentile in the grade level above, to consider them for double acceleration. It actually, at that grade level, has to be a specific written number, because the beginning of the 99th percentile doesn't reach the 85th percentile in the next grade level. And actually, you have to go, it's 99-plus in the actual scores to get there. Then, when we get down into fourth grade, we would look at students who are at the 97th percentile or above for double acceleration, and then 85th and 80th, et cetera. So basically, we'd be setting sort of a two-tiered system to look at double acceleration criteria and single acceleration criteria. Eventually, in fifth grade, getting to that criteria we talked about to capture the former Math A group of students, bringing down for single to the 80th and 75th, and then continuing to look at the 97th and above for double acceleration. Just by way of comparison, this sort of slide gives you an idea of, those numbers aren't necessarily arbitrary. They really kind of do track at, we want to see these percentiles lining up as we go forward. The, it can pass as time goes on, which is where, as you start to see as the numbers go forward, you know, the 97th percentile in fourth grade puts you at the 84th percentile two grade levels ahead. The 97th percentile in sixth grade puts you at the 90th percentile two grade levels ahead. So that's where that criteria shifting makes sense against the map norming that we use. So then again, next steps here, our Math Committee is scheduled to meet next week. We would be finalizing the teacher rating scale pieces, so we'd have those numbers and what that would look like for the criteria. One of the things we've talked about is, there is, the MAP test has a two, second through fifth grade version and a sixth grade plus version. And so just finalizing when we would have fifth graders begin to take that more advanced test based on their math placement. We need to look at those additional assessments for the kids that are within that 5% and determine what that would look like. That's all Math Committee would. And then, a lot of communication on this process. You know, one of the things around all of this is, sometimes we hesitate to communicate around acceleration or gifted placement, because it isn't going to be for all students. And so for many students, the answer is, that's not an opportunity that is appropriate for you right now. But we do want to make sure that the criteria for all of those kinds of things is widely understood, and that the timelines for those are widely understood as well. And then obviously, the Math Committee is still working on monitoring and working through the implementation of all of our new math curricular resources. So really, most of this is update in terms of where we're looking to change criteria. All of those criteria sit under procedure level, but I did want to make sure the board was aware, as there's a couple of new things in there in terms of that formalizing of double acceleration, the elimination of a couple of middle school classes, and the rationale behind all of that. So, questions on the math component here?
That looks like it aligns really well with high school. I think much more than maybe we had in the past. Have you gotten any feedback from 99?
We haven't. I mean, really, you know, 99 is primary. What we know is that the majority of our students who are accelerated do continue and receive that proficiency credit in their sophomore year, or in their freshman year, excuse me. In terms of the double acceleration piece, you know, there are other middle schools that are feeders to 99 that do offer that, you know, and so we are aware of kind of what that looks like for double accelerated students and what their trajectory is in high school. So we haven't necessarily shared this set of criteria, but I think, you know, what they're looking for is, are we sending students who are going to find success in the accelerated program?
You know, I, this just seems significantly more structured to me in some way. Not that it wasn't before, but I, this is the clearest vision I think I've seen in my time sitting on the board, and exactly how your outlook, and maybe we just haven't talked about it enough, but it seemed, it seems, it seems like there's a really good solid path and multiple paths forward, I think that aligns more with the middle school component. I don't, I just find it very easy to follow through. Even as I read it before you talked, I really had an, I really felt like I had an understanding of how that flow is going to work.
What's helpful in this is that we're now applying a similar set of criteria. The actual numbers change a little as time goes on, but it, there's not several different, and now this year, we apply this, and then all of a sudden, in seventh grade, we apply a whole different set of criteria. Like, it really is rooted in the same concept of, this is what places you here and here. And then even when we think about going into seventh grade, if a student needs support in math, we're not using a different set of criteria, we're using the same criteria we used to determine if they need support as a sixth grader, and we have a similar structure now to provide that support. So it really does streamline and unify the type of criteria we're using for decision-making.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Is acceleration evaluated annually? So a student that's accelerated may not be accelerated the following year? Or, in this situation, a student that's double accelerated may not be double accelerated the following year?
So the new piece that we're adding is the, is the kind of acknowledgement that by the end of the first trimester of newly accelerated students, we're going to just review that placement. We'll have a set of questions to ask, so that if there are concerns about the placement, we address them early. Once you've gone through a year of accelerated math, it's really challenging to support the idea of repeating an entire year of content if that placement wasn't successful. So we want to have those conversations early on. And to the other question, yes, all students would be evaluated annually under all of this criteria, so that students whose, who may not be found eligible as a third grader could be found eligible as a fourth grader, even under the same criteria, based on their growth.
Thanks.
All right. We have one other item on the list, which was a professional learning update. However, given the hour and the fact that there are audience members here who may have waited to make comments, I'm going to go ahead and push that to be the first thing we'll do next Monday. So I'm going to jump a few slides ahead and simply do my wrap-up here, which is, next Monday, we're going to talk about NOW, professional learning, K-5 social studies, SEL curriculum committee, elementary general music, brief overview of the new ISBE equity journey continuum, and any, you know, maybe a couple of data follow-ups depending on where we head from there. And then, on Monday, as I mentioned, a couple of potential action items that we'll go back over a list of on next Monday, to make sure we're all anticipating what might come around. So, that will be the conclusion of my portion of the presentation for tonight, and we'll pick it up again next week.
All right, before I go to public comment, is there any last board questions or comments? All right. Then that brings us to the special two-way public comment opportunity for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during, during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. Remember, criticism of individuals is not in order. The board is allotted 30 minutes. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I just have one card today. Steve, Montana?
Yep. I'm going to pass out something real quick.
Sure. Highland, wanting to talk about growth data.
That, that's just that one. Pretty simple.
Oh, you're good.
Don't worry about it. You're fine.
We'll share.
Give the mic, please. Thank you.
Steve from Tannen Highland, parent of four children. So this goes, I think, to what Darren was saying about looking at different groups of kids in a grade and how they're doing. So I passed out a sheet that is on Butler 53, and it's just, the only reason I pulled it from Butler was because it was easy to find. They put together a really nice presentation with the map data. And I think what's important is, the data that's presented, or that was presented at the February 14th meeting, simply was like a pass/fail for growth. I don't know that, while I understand why that data is important, I think what's in there is a little bit more expansive. So it, they do have growth data in their document, I didn't print that out, because that matched up with what 58 had. What's in there is the percentage of growth. So 100% would mean you met your growth, and then above that. So I think you want to quantify the growth, not only like a pass/fail system, where they met their growth or they didn't. So, did they double their growth for the year? Did they just meet the growth? Did they grow, did they not grow at all? Or did they miss it by one point? I think that's important to know. So I think that that was one thing. I also think that, and again, this, I would like to see more data. The data right now is limited to just District 58, there's no data on any school. There's no data on our, you know, lower achieving kids growing, our higher achieving kids growing. All we know is that a certain percentage of the kids in a certain grade, for the whole district, passed or failed their growth metric. So I think we can, we can do better as administration, and I would ask that the board ask the administration to do that. I've asked the administration to do that before the 14th. I asked them to think about some of these things. I shared with them the same document that I'm sharing with you right now. And matter of fact, in, I think it was the 2018 map data moment in time, winter, they had a lot more data. They had some of this data in there. And I don't know why it got removed at some point, but it is important. It is important to know those things, school basis, on a school basis, and on a more individual basis. One thing about ECR, I would hope that that data is public. I think, I know it needs to be anonymized, it needs to be anonymous, but I would hope that it would be public, that people could look at it and inspect it. And I think the last point I wanted to make was, with regards to advocacy. I've been an advocate for my kids for growth. I've spoken with Dr. Russell a number of times. I have spoken with Mr. Sissel probably more than he cares to speak with me. And it's been a bumpy road. I'd be happy to share outside with the board a little bit of my experience. I don't feel comfortable doing it in a public setting, I think for my kids' privacy. But, safe to say, I think we can do better. I think some of the things that are being discussed now are a step in the right direction. I would like to think that maybe some of those things have been because of my conversations with Mr. Sissel, to be perfectly honest. And one thing I did want to point out was, I think Mr. Sissel is right in saying that in kindergarten through second grade, there isn't necessarily an obligation by the administration to evaluate kids for acceleration. But there does need to be a policy in place. The law says, "A fair and equitable decision-making process that involves multiple persons and includes the student, parents, or guardians." That's, whatever. A4 says, "An assessment process that includes multiple valid reliable indicators." So there needs to be a process in place. Right now, the policy is, my opinion, not in compliance with the law. It only applies to third graders, this says all students. I've shared that with Mr. Sissel, I think there may be a consensus on that. I have a draft, I was provided with a draft update. I still think it's deficient in that there's not, it's not addressing two or four. So, I think with those comments, you know, yeah. The other thing I would like to mention, one last thing. There is, there is growth data, it's called the conditional growth index. It's a Z-score, it's in NWEA. Every student gets one. It's in a specialized growth report that isn't sent to parents. That will tell you in and of itself if you met your growth, and then how much you exceeded it by. So a zero CGI for a student would be meeting their growth. A one would be one standard deviation above. And obviously, it can go below if you didn't meet your growth. So I think that that would be a good indicator for potentially just looking at kind of what Butler does, if we took averaged certain groups, we could see if those groups are growing, if the curriculum is addressing their needs for school, and if it's not. So some of the data is there, and it's just, it's not being utilized, or it's not being presented. The last thing I would say is, it's very hard to find this data on the District 58 website. I'm an advocate for, for education and for growth, and I have struggled to find some of these documents that I'm referring to. I've spent countless hours, the Butler 53 website, you go there, there's a document that, with a link, first page you click on, it has all the information for this year. So I would ask that the board kind of ask the administration to make some of this data more readily accessible for the community, kind of with what they have, but also on a larger scale, as it relates to individual schools, as it relates to some of those other metrics that I said.
Yes, Steve, thank you. This has been something that this board and the previous board has been advocating for some time. We were on, what I would say was, a good track, because it was part of our last strategic plan, that we got a little bit off track the last two years. But I know I've seen you here before, and I know we've received emails from you in the past. I think that you, if, as we've been going through this process over the last couple of months, a lot of what you're talking about is exactly what I think, pretty uniformly, the board has been advocating for, and growth is, growth is a big aspect of that. But the other part that you're mentioning here is another key component, and that is our transparency. I think we pride ourselves in being transparent in a lot of stuff that we do, and I think this data is another part of it. I'm looking forward to the tools that are, that are going to be presented to us. But I fully expect that we, as an organization, will be very transparent with the data. Obviously, not individual scores on students as well, but, but really understanding how our schools are individually performing, as well as different demographic groups, or like we were talking about, our accelerated groups. You're not the only one who's been advocating for this from the outside, but I appreciate your advocacy that you've been doing. And I was glad to see today some of the standardization, I think that's even growing, on our accelerated programs. The comment I made, I think we're moving in the right direction, that I read through those slides, and prior to the meeting, I felt like I had a really good grasp on our process there. I think that we're cleaning that up, and I'm looking forward to what's going to continue to come. I don't know if anyone else has a, has a comment?
No, I guess, I'll only touch on the transparency. I would agree that we need to be sharing more of this information at various levels. You know, I think it's, you know, one of the conversations that we continue to have, and I think, honestly, I thought we were going to be a little bit further along with the ECR and kind of get into that dashboard, but I think we still have the opportunity to be a little more transparent, so we get that full dashboard, where we can dive into slice and dice the data any possible way that we want to. So I, I agree with everything you're saying in terms of transparency, there's an opportunity for improvement, and we got to continue to attack that.
I think, oh, go ahead, Chris, sorry.
There's a piece to this that, I think, Justin, you alluded to with acceleration in the earlier grades. We do a formal acceleration process for students that are rising third graders. From the way that I interpreted what you're suggesting is, if you are a first-grade parent, you can advocate for your student to be accelerated, but it's not something the district will do proactively. Help us, help us as a board understand where the policy is today, and what, how we're executing it.
So that, the current practice is that, is exactly what you said. We look at second graders at the end of the year across the district, and that's when we begin acceleration on a large-scale basis. It's accurate that we don't have a, at this moment, we don't have a printed procedure that says, what is the, what do we do if a first-grade family says, "I would like for my child to be accelerated." And so in the absence of that, you know, we look at some of the criteria that is in place, and individual solutions that may be possible for, you know, we in place and individual solutions that may be possible for, you know, we, we've created some second grade enrichment programs across the district to acknowledge some of, you know, early exposure to third grade concepts. But in terms of, you know, a, a response that would be as detailed as say our, what we would say to a family who wanted their child to enter kindergarten early, today, that practice is not written out and it has, it has been handled by, through individual conversations over the past several years. And I think one of the things that, that we are looking to do is to increase the specificity of what that response would look like so that we do have a set of criteria that, that is clearly laid out to make sure that anyone who looks at it externally can see that it does meet all of the criteria of the Accelerated Placement Act.
I guess, just to follow up and help, help me understand how that does or doesn't align with what the Illinois State Board of Education is asking of school districts?
So they are asking, as Mr. Spatana quoted the code, "There needs to be a process that involved, there is a fair decision-making process that involves multiple stakeholders and pieces of information around the child." We have, we have, we have handled that probably in a less formal way than we would handle other acceleration moments or other requests for early admission over the past few years. This is relatively new legislation, but it's not new enough that, you know, we probably would have been better served to have a more specified practice in place for requests like that. And I think that's one of the things that as we've acknowledged, we're, we're looking to evolve so that by the time we begin next school year, we have something that will be shared and publicly viewable to say, if you as a family or you as a teacher believe that a student who is a kindergartner should be accelerated into the next grade level for, for math or should have access to next grade level material in other places, here is the, here is the set of criteria that we will look at and here's the way that decision-making process will happen, here's who it will involve, and then it just be, it's a, it's a much clearer path for everyone. And I think that's a, it's a fair area of reflection in an area that we can grow in as a district.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, Steve, I want to thank you for coming and I want to thank you for, excuse me, the conversations you've had with myself and Justin moving through. In terms of the presentations, we can certainly post our presentations on the assessment tabs to make them a little easier for our parents to find historically. That, that's not an issue at all. That's one of the nice things about the curricular workshops is when we get feedback, we do really try and apply that. In terms of the school conditional growth percentile with NWA, you are correct. You can find that information on both the individual level and then also the school percentile. Looking back to the presentation that we gave on the 14th, one of the things we were trying to do was just give a global presentation, knowing that we're still working toward ECR and exactly how do we want to define growth and how do we want to define achievement. We did put the school conditional growth percentiles on that presentation that we had on the 14th. So at least our families could see, and this is what Justin pointed out on the 14th, how is this school doing compared to every other school that started in that same boat, which would give you a similar, Butler's representing it a little bit differently. I'm familiar with how they represented. My wife actually teach in, in Butler, so I, I do have a little familiarity with what they're doing. But certainly that information is something that we're trying to share. I think, you know, Steve, to your point, I think we are pretty far along with ECR and I think you're going to see that evolve on the 14th in terms of getting that out there for our community to see. I think we've been coalescing behind it and I think we are ready to take that step. But certainly, Steve, I appreciate your feedback tonight. We can get that information up on the website for our families. And I want to assure the public listening in and everybody here, whatever we ultimately decide with ECR, will be publicly available for our families. We, we believe in that, we want our families to see it. In terms of the Accelerated Placement Act, especially for those K2, we do have work to do on that and we, we can get more precise. I think the challenge with K2 is being a big school system. We have to be very careful that we don't end up with hundreds and hundreds of kids at different levels, right? Because this isn't a competency-based system that we have. And we do have an obligation to meet students where they're at and to present them with accelerator work if they are ready for that. But what we have to just be very careful of is making sure that we have that foundation in place before they're accelerated and then also not being able to have, you know, 35 different levels at the class depending on where kids are at. So those are all things that we'll take into consideration, but certainly the feedback that we've received is helpful and we'll continue to flush that out in, in I think the presentation tonight. Steve, you certainly did have some help in creating that, but, but know that we have been working on that as well. But we do appreciate your feedback and thank you for coming out.
Normally I would stop there, but I do have about 10 minutes left in public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment tonight?
I think...
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, and so I guess, you know, some of my reasoning is, so, so first of all, going back to 2018, the MAP presentation, that, that winter presentation, there was similar data, at least on a district level, that percentage. I, I mean, I have it, I only printed one copy, but, but that data was, you know, presented in 2018. But going back to, I think, kind of what started this is, you know, if, if we look at, you know, fall '21 to winter '22, kindergarten has, has a pretty low conditional growth percentile and second grade also has a really low conditional growth present, percentile compared to first grade. So to me, what I would like to see, and I don't have the answer because the data hasn't been presented, is why aren't we hitting that pass fail number for more kids in those grades? Especially when the achievement is relatively high coming in. So, you know, I, I don't have, and I guess I do have the data, so...
Well, Steve, can I jump in there though?
Sure.
When you look at kindergarten, they're at the 41st percentile for conditional growth. I wouldn't call that relatively low because the target is the 50th percentile. In order to outpace your norm group, you want to get to the 50th percentile or higher. That's kind of what we were talking with John earlier. So you're correct, they're at the 41st percentile in terms of growth. What that means is that when you look at the kindergarten group as a whole and you compare them to other kindergarten groups that started at the same point, we beat 41% of the schools that started in that same thing. So it's not at the 50th percentile, you're correct with that, but I wouldn't characterize that as, you know, really low either. When you look at first grade, they're at the 81st percentile. So certainly they are way above that norm. And so if you were looking at that Z-score, I don't have it in front of me, but you would expect that to be well north of one there. But I don't necessarily consider that, you know, that low either. Because again, the 50th is right where we want to be in order to keep up with that peer group.
Sure, and, and I understand that and that, you know, I think there's other data that I found that I cannot find on the website anymore. So I, I don't know where it went, but I did print out for one of my meetings with Mr. Sissel and I'd be happy to kind of bring it over and share it with you, but it was titled, it's a slide from a presentation, I think probably from 2018, because that's kind of the last MAP regular data, I think, that existed. And again, and I think what it shows is it shows, and we'll break it over, but, you know, grade one, there's a high achievement and high growth. And then grade two, there's less high growth and a significant amount of high achieving kids that are not showing the growth that they want. And so I mean, and this is, this is a District 58 prepared slide. So I, I don't have one, but I'd be happy to bring it up. So I think this is something that isn't just a, a one-off. I do wonder if, you know, that there is opportunities where kids come in in kindergarten and they can do, they can add and subtract. And, you know, in kindergarten, we're probably working on like counting to five or to 10, you know? And in second grade, they're working on addition and subtraction. And there are kids that can do addition with regrouping and subtraction with regrouping and even multiplication. And so they're in a second grade classroom when they already know how to do multiplication. I don't know how those kids are supposed to grow. And, and so I'll just, I'll walk around with this.
And just to kind of repeat what I said earlier, everything you're saying, I think, is resonating with us pretty strong because this is, this is the way that we're trying to look at, at the data and understand. This is why we've been really kind of trying to focus on a, on a growth mindset and... But honestly, I'm really looking forward to this new way of measuring it. And I really would like to see, once we kind of have a better understanding of the data, it would be nice to make sure that we get this up somewhat organized and maybe they don't, we don't always have to deep dive into slide decks to find things, but there's some kind of performance dashboard.
Yeah, and I'll even share some personal perspective on this. You know, I don't think it comes down to like data not being presented. I think it comes down to, you know, are we presenting in a consistent manner? You know, is it the right level of detail? I always, I think Emily always keeps me in check, you know? I'm always looking for the, the extreme level of detail in these, these forums and, and I think the reality is that sometimes we got to present the high level and then we, but at the same time, we need to be able to have, you know, it presented in an easy way where people could go find whatever level of detail we, we're at. So I think that, you know, we recognize that there is those opportunities for improvement, but I, I think the one thing that probably you and I would struggle with is in this form, we're not going to get to that individual student level or that subgroup of, of five individuals that are in, you know, the 10th, the 13th, 39th percentile. We're not going to get to that in this, but we need to be able to have a place within our repository, whether it's on the website or wherever, where we could point people to say, "Hey, if you want to look for that level of detail, this is where it's found." And I think those scatter plots where we have growth versus achievement were very effective in 2018. I actually recall those conversations where we, we all looked around the table and said how powerful they were and, and, you know, I, I guess where I kind of see this going eventually is, once we do have that powerful dashboard, that those will be able to be a couple clicks of the mouse and I could see, you know, that third grade section with 29 students at Lester to kind of figure out exactly what's going on. And that's, you know, where I think a lot of us are, are trying to get to, but where we're at right now is, I, you know, sometimes I'm like, where is this information for the Lester third grade? And then I gotta, I gotta make a phone call, right?
Well, and I think that's something we'll just have to, we'll have to continue the conversation about because those scatter plot moments that we're referring to, that wasn't actual data. That was sample data that is...
Exactly.
...actual data at the building level that's used for analysis at, at multiple levels. But when we get to the point of data transparency, we, we certainly, we can create and post just about anything, but the dashboard will never be interactive where an anonymous user on the website can start clicking around with District 58 data. Like we will be, we can post static things like that. But, so I'm more than willing to generate any of those kinds of things. And, and again, I think at the meeting on the 14th, I acknowledge and I referenced it tonight, it's probably the last time we're going to look at data in this format. And I, I think waiting just a couple more months until we get into a new format and new visualizations and things like that would, would be greatly appreciated so that we don't have to recreate something and then create it again. But I think then the conversation will have to go to, what is, how are we defining that transparency? Because to say, "I want to be able to look at a third grade class at Lester and their growth," is something we will have the ability to do administratively very quickly. But in terms of how much of that we're populating on the website...
Right.
...and without contextualizing, without the, the analysis that's there, I think we just, we need to be thoughtful about that. I think data is powerful, but I think the conversation around data should never be left outside of that either, especially if we start really drilling down in a very public way. Because when you get to 29 students, you can name them. And so we, you know, we just have to be thoughtful about, well, how are we approaching all of that transparency while we're also maintaining, you know, student privacy and things like that as well? So I think there's a, there's a, there's a bunch that we can do, but I want to, I just want to make sure that we aren't misrepresenting what that dashboard will be. It will give us tremendous capacity to much more quickly generate things. And, and yet, it's, it won't necessarily be able to give any outside user the ability to just find that. If we as a, as a, are directed or if we as an administrative team determine these are the kinds of things we're going to post regularly, absolutely, we, we can work toward that. And yes, getting the, all of the prior data presentations in one spot on the website, it will not take long for someone to do in, in the next period of time.
Yeah, I want to just piggyback off of that. One of the things I love about a strategic plan in a school district is there could be a million good ideas of what a school district should focus on. A strategic plan boils it down and says, "Okay, with all the good ideas, here's where we're moving toward." In terms of data, no matter what we put out in data, there's always going to be a legitimate and fair argument, "Well, why didn't you include this?" Or "This should also be in here." Well, a lot of the data that we've presented up until this point is a response to a question here, a question there, we should include this. So the whole reason, and I don't want to lose sight of this, that we have consulted with ECR as part of our strategic plan is so we as a community and a board can get on the same page as, "This is the data that we're going to report out, this is the data that we're going to benchmark and this is the data that we're going to hold ourselves accountable for." Otherwise, I fear, we'll constantly be in a state of what I call data whack-a-mole where, "Well, show me this," and then we show that, and then we're over here and we're looking at that. And so, again, the reason John was here tonight is because over the last year plus, we've been having conversations about, what do we actually want to show our community? What does our community want to see? And utilizing the district leadership team and the strategic planning process, that's where we're landing on right now. And I think we've got a really good process for that. So I want to make sure that throughout this process that the board is comfortable when we do ask for the final vote, is this exactly what you want to see moving forward? Because otherwise, we, we could be in this for a very long time in terms of this or that or what about this? And so again, we could show data millions of, of different ways, but that's why we coalesce behind working with John and ECR to make sure that we're on the same page moving forward.
Well, that's, that's what this board has been focused on, I think, for several years, but over the last several months. And so, Dr. Russell, Mr. Sissel, I think more than anything, one of the things I remember, I remember back to when, when Tracy used to be sitting out. One of your, one of your key things that you always talked about was consistency. Like if we're going to measure it by this metric, let's do that every single time so that we can go back and look at it and understand how that relates to how we've worked historically. And that's why I'm, you know, why I'm trying to be patient through this process and why we're, why we're talking about it because while it is going to be static, I don't expect, you're right, as soon as we start getting into classrooms, you give me a scatter plot of like my kid's classroom, I can probably figure out who, you know, who some of those kids are and that's not appropriate.
Yeah, but I, I disagree. I, I still think we need to be transparent at the, at the, the classroom level. Like, well, if, if we have 19 kids, 29 kids, they're, they're a dot, right? Like I don't, I don't think we're singling anybody out at the individual level by, by sharing that information with our community.
And, and we can have that conversation, but at a minimum, there is going to be static data that I think needs to be out there and I think it needs to be consistent. So as we go through the, you know, as we go through the year and that, you know, as we go through the different periods of measurement and year after year, we can go back and historically look and then we can start to look at how we kind of, what we did post, you know, post pandemic well and what we didn't and, and how we continue to improve, the impact that changing things like our, our middle school schedule or our math program or whatever it might be, the impact that that's had on learning in and of itself. I think that's, that's the stuff that we want to be able to see, you know, at whatever level that is. And we just want to know that I think that we're working with the same data that at some point is, is in front of that teacher that she's working with. I, I think where we felt disconnected is sometimes we felt like we were looking at different data that maybe, even though it was in the aggregate, we know we're looking at something in the aggregate versus looking at an individual. We like to know that, that what we're measuring is important here is also what's being measured as important all the way down into the, into the classroom level.
And to jump on that, again, one of the reasons that the data is presented in the way it is, is because when you look at the strategic plan that was developed by the community, those were the benchmarks that the strategic plan called for. So as administrators, that's what we go off of as kind of our talking points or how we're going to hold ourselves accountable is going back to the strategic plan. Over the last two years, the board has said, "Well, these key performance indicators expired, so we need to look at this in a different way." And we started to gather that data and to look it out. We certainly still will continue as administrator, or excuse me, as administration to look at it school by school, class by class. And, and that's exactly the role of the classroom teacher and the building principal is to make sure that they're holding, you know, each other accountable, just like we have to hold the district, you know, and ourselves accountable for that data. I do want to caution, if we start to get to class first class and school versus school, I've been in districts that have done that, it, it's a cautionary tale. It, it really is. It's not that you don't look at that data and it's not that you don't do that at the building level through principals and teachers. You start to really go down a path there of hostility toward one school versus another or class versus class. And we historically haven't done that. Again, it's not that that data doesn't exist, it's not that we don't look at it. It's just a cautionary tale because, again, that can lead to some pretty dark places. And so I just want to caution everybody, you know, against necessarily saying, "Okay, let's get out the," and I'm not sure if anybody said this, but let's get out the second grade classes at this school and let's start comparing, you know, how one class did versus another. There's more to it than that and I think we have to be very careful of that. There's more to it than that and I think we have to be very careful of that.
Well, and I think this is, goes right back to that virtual peer group that we were talking about earlier, right? If you're looking at schools, instead of looking school versus school within the district, you're looking at similarly situated schools with similarly situated populations and how they're doing in growth and how they're doing in achievement. And are we meeting that 50% or above threshold in those instances? That's why I'm really curious to see what comes of that conversation.
The conversation we're having here isn't surprising, right? We, we've talked about the fact that to Kevin's point, our KPIs have expired. The way we measure things needs to evolve. And so the arc that the administration has taken us on is very much aligned to our strategic plan. So I fully agree with that. The place that we're in right now is a moment of, given where we've been, what we've been excited about, what we're unhappy with, where are we headed, right? And we are in, we're like the 40-yard line of that conversation right now. We've gotten some ideas about where we could go. We've gotten some ideas about what that could look like. And what Justin and Kevin have asked for is give us the '21-'22 school year to be able to start to land that plan. And so we are in February of that school year right now. They presented the six to eight metrics that they want us to monitor. They presented potential benchmarks and targets that we want to be looking at. And by the end of this school year, what we just heard tonight is we'll be looking at spring data in a way that looks very different than what we've looked at possibly in the past. I think as a board, what we have to then provide the administration direction on is out of the million ways we could look at data, what are the ways we want to start to experiment with that are honestly like in the one to two ways we'd like for you to help us understand how that data could be interpreted or looked at? Not the 10 to 12, not the 15 to 18. What we really do need to do is give them some direction on what we want to look at is that two-by-two matrix as a district. How many restaurants move from high achievement, high growth and stated high achievement, high growth? If that's what we want to look at, let's ask for a view that looks like that and maybe a couple of other ways at most. And let's experiment with what we like there. Come the fall data, let's look at what we liked from the spring and maybe add something that we didn't like or didn't see but wanted to see differently. I think that's how we get our district to a place where we start to get a sense for what data is most important. Maybe it is conditional growth percentile. But it might be conditional growth percentile as a trend over multiple years to see, do we have a challenge in second grade in particular and first and third are doing really well, right? But that one two-by-two matrix is only really one classroom, I believe at Pierce Downer potentially, that gives us a sample for how that one classroom did that particular season and that particular test. So I want to be very careful like how narrowly we look at it and specifically how, what is the trend line and what are the points in time we want to be looking at? Because we could cut it a million different ways. I do that in my day job, but that's not a way to run a school district, right? That's the way to run as a teacher, how you look at your classroom. But as a board, we have to provide a couple of different signals for what do we want to look at? I feel like we're going to get there. The guidance that come March at the discussion, what I would have said then, I'll say it now and I'll say it again in a couple of weeks is we're going to have to provide some signal around what do we want, how do we want this data to look? And if that means visuals or if that means one-on-one conversations with Justin or whatever it might be. But as a board, we're going to have to coalesce around that.
All right. Thank you and thank you for public comment tonight. That leaves us with one announcement. We do have the second half of this curriculum workshop on Monday, March 7th at 7:00 PM right back here at O'Neill Middle School. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. The meeting is now adjourned at 10:10 PM.